It doesn't come close, you know, to meeting any of them. You know, they're all government related, for one thing. And just the fact that a person has to pay to use that service, that means that's not a public facility anymore. It's not a playground, it's not a school, it's not a library. It's a business, you know, so it's not a public facility. And that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. Um, anybody online, forgot about that part. Uh, looks like there might be a hand up.
Yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
This is Ian Bryant. Uh, sorry, I couldn't be there in person for this meeting. I'm traveling at the moment, but I wanted to, as a resident, also resident of Jim Bridger Estates, wanted to continue to voice my concern with the sightlines and the, um, uh, the, how the tower will stand out on that ridge. Um, I also wanted to, uh, follow up and say, I thought I came in a little late. I had the wrong links. I don't think it was addressed from the comments I just heard, but also wanted to, um, point out that I was also surprised. I thought we discussed that there was going to be, um, research and discussion around using the existing cell tower on the west side of the Jim Bridger Estates. Um, and I would, I was surprised that we did not get any information about that, so, um, thank you, that's all I'd.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in the room or online?
If I could say one more thing here, I'm searching for the, uh, piece of paper here. Um, but it stated the purpose of the, the plan that is coming up, that was drafted in 2023. And it specifically states, you know, that it prevents the random, you know, development in residential areas. Um, gosh, I mean, I'm sure you all have, have read it, uh, you know, so. Um, anyway, that's what it says. It's, you know, the whole plan is to prevent random development outside of certain, um, uh, residential areas. So anyway, I'm not saying it right, but there you go.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. Do I now give the applicant an opportunity to respond? I think so. Do you guys have any, uh, anything you'd like to respond to the public comment with?
Yes, we can respond to the, the Union Tower co-location. Um, and so, as I mentioned earlier in some of my opening remarks, was that this facility was actually in existence long before Union's facility was constructed. Um, if you look at the sightlines related to the Union facility, I don't know if you have any pictures of that.
I do see video of, from the Union looking to the other one.
Um, and I have a picture from it, from the ridge line there, but the cluster of antennas that's at the top of their tower, um, resides just above the tree line. And so, any, um, any co-location on that would have to be below their existing antennas, which would put it within the tree line where the trees were obstructing the signal. Um, and there, there's a lot of technical considerations when it comes to wireless deployment of, of this kind of technology. Um, but you see this a lot of cases where co-location isn't always possible because of what's interference from, you know, this carrier is being co-located on the same tower. There's a lot of, uh, we call it syncing. So it uses GPS sync to communicate or to sync when the towers are transmitting. And so effectively the towers transmit at the same time to the customers and then they listen at the same time to hear the customers. And that allows different providers to reuse the same frequencies at different locations. If you put all of the providers on a single tower, you take away their ability to use the same frequencies. And, and this has been a case in a lot of places, California, you know, Oregon, Washington, where they force co-location, they actually hurt the performance of their wireless networks by doing some of that. And that's been some of the things that the FCC has addressed in some of their small cell, uh, uh, federal preemptive orders is to prevent prohibition of deployment of technology for that very reason. Um, technically speaking, the Union's tower, while it would serve as co-location, would hamper our ability to serve the same customer base. Um, there's actually some case law related to the Wyoming, Wyoming Supreme Court, uh, specific case that references Jolovich versus Board of County Commissioners of Park County, Docket S 2215. And, uh, Supreme Court under two, under point two, uh, did not require the board to consider alternative site plans for a project before approving a special use permit because of federal preemptions. Um, I, I, and I've, I've read your guys' draft zoning plans, um, especially as it relates to wireless telecommunications. There's a, there's a lot of case law up in the Court of Appeals that, um, some of that draft zoning proposal is probably at odds with. Um, and so I'd certainly encourage some review there. As far as the aesthetics aspect of it, uh, the site is existing. I suspect that many of the folks with aesthetic complaints, will see that the resulting facility from our upgrade would be less aesthetically, uh, impactful than the current one. Uh, S 2215.
What was the name?
Jolovich versus Board of County Commissioners of Park County. Uh, and I believe if, if memory serves, this is a case of a landowner resident bringing a case against the county commissioners for their approval of a application of a telecommunications provider's, uh, tower. In which case the, uh, court ruled in favor of the commission's right to approve it.
Other questions or comments from the mission? I guess for the applicant or for the ones we can. Does can take a seat.
Yeah, one more thing, please. Sorry, is that acceptable? If I want, I was looking for before, it's very short paragraph.
You know.
I believe. Yes. I believe we're past the public comment.
Well, that makes perfect sense.
All right, any discussion?
Um, well, one thing, so I'm looking at this. This picture of what the tower will look like. Um, it does look, you know, pretty minimal, minimal. On the fact that they have a existing tower, this isn't just an upgrade on that existing tower. The fact that they've agreed to go back to the existing height is something that I think that we should, um, consider.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm a little bit torn because a lot of the arguments that I hear the applicant saying tonight are about saying that they think they don't need to go through the CUP process. And if that's the case, then I think that, um, you know, the application could be withdrawn or tabled. It, I don't hear strong arguments, um, otherwise, uh, based on kind of what we talked about. And I frankly, at the last meeting, um, I think that I came to the realization myself, I think that in the past, that our board and, uh, has erred on towers and how we've approached them. I think that, I should say past boards, uh, part of which I have been included in. Um, but when I came on to the board originally, uh, conditional use permits and variances were how I was told it was done with towers. Uh, but upon reflecting on that further, I think we had, I can't remember what the gentleman's name was, the previous Pine Dell Town Planner, had some commentary about the language kind of calling it into question. Uh, Mr. Hexel, if I've got that right, or Haskel, uh, I think brought some of the language and the regulations up to our attention and, um, in my mind, I'm reflecting on that. I thought I, I actually, I think these people have really good points. Um, and I think that we actually have no regulatory basis on which to approve towers, variances for height. And I hear we, in this case, we may need a very, we may have a height issue, we may not. But just don't meet the definition of a variance. It's not a self-inflicted harm. It doesn't, there's like four different things that variances are, it's none of them. Um, it's not, and it does grant a privilege. That's one of the things about variances is that variances should not be used to grant a privilege to anybody. Well, everybody in that zoning district has the same restriction. We're granting a privilege to one person, uh, or one entity. Um, so I personally, I, I don't think, and this is obviously going to come up again later because we have another tower thing. But I, I think we have no regulatory basis on which to approve towers right now. And I think that until we have our regulations, which we have a draft of, so, uh, you know, I, I would personally recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that they support, promote, charge us with working on the tower chapter and getting that done. Um, but until then, I don't, I don't believe that we have anything in the regulations to get us there from here. Uh, so for that, for this application, if it does go the CUP route, that would be my take. If it doesn't, um, you know, I hear a couple of arguments went around non-conforming uses or sites. And another, um, another argument, I can't remember what the other one was now, but a couple of things I heard said was kind of proposing that maybe you don't need to. In which case I'd say that the applicant could work with our planning administrator and county attorney on kind of deciphering and interpreting what to do about what's there now and how to proceed forward. Um, but that's my take on kind of where we are right now.
Can I piggyback off of that, please? Um, just, I wanted to follow up too, based off of a question was asked to the county attorney. And as far as how towers fit in the code, and I just think the response is just to, just to follow up from that, um, how we do not currently have a regulation for tower. And it's not contemplated in the regulations right now. However, sorry, maybe I should just read the whole sentence. The reality of the situation is that our regulations are currently structured in a way that prohibits all land uses. Not specifically described in the regulations and towers are not contemplated in the regulations and are therefore banned. However, a local government does not have the authority to outright ban the placement of towers. So we've been considering them a public facility since it's the closest thing that fits. So I just wanted to point that out, even though it's something that's not necessarily in the code, we can't just ban them. So this is how it's fit in.
Thanks for that. That's helpful to have his input. I, I guess what I would say to that is that we, um, the board's charge is to effectuate the planning and zoning regulations. We cannot create things outside of the planning and zoning regulations. The public facility, I just, I don't remember if it was the previous town planner or if it was Mr. Hexel or somebody, but just pointed out public facility is not it. And I agree entirely, when you read the definition of a public facility, it just does not meet it. Um, so we might as well call it house or something, right? I mean, like it, it could be anything. Uh, I, I don't think it works. So I, what I would say is in response to that, if Clayton were here tonight, uh, you know, that while he may be right, that that is, uh, then would rise to, uh, the Board of County Commissioners and would be outside the scope of what the Planning and Zoning Commission is charged with doing or what we even have. You know, I mean, we have no purview over things that are not in the regulations and it's not in the regulations.
Yeah, I think, um, generally agree with those comments. The struggle that I have now and that I had last meeting was calling it a public facility. And I'm being told that that's how we've done it in the past. And the issue, and with that is that we don't have within our regulations, any distinction between public facility within different zoning types. It's generally accepted in all the types and, um, we went on to power and ag, which, you know, I think that if we had some distinction between public facility and ag, commercial, by industrial, the industrial versus residential would be easier to make this distinction, but it's difficult to just call it public facility. And then, I mean, I think that the, the comments are obviously different within residential than what we've heard in the other zoning types. But it's, it is difficult under that, um, title. Then go on to say, you know, oh, public facility and ag or commercial, but in residential. So I fully agree that we need something to where we can look at these, uh, you know. Honestly feels a little bit embarrassing to discuss it and not have any way to. Yeah.
So I will say something as a newbie. Yes. So bear with me. Um, Haley, you did suggest that we meet next month and talk about tower regulations specifically. So is that, is that something that we could do? So is that, is that something that we could do in order to clarify this? Because it would meet the. Guidelines of public notice. But I just don't know what we do with. Our applicant.
Yeah, it seems to me that the current applicant has a few different avenues that they could choose from. I don't know about our later applicant, but. Yeah, I think that given the situation we're in, that's why I was saying, I think we need the Board of County Commissioners to. You know, they they have the choices to make, they could take these applications and push them forward either with the denial or exceptions. Regardless of what we do. They could. Also put a moratorium on towers until we, I mean, of course, this is me speaking, I'm not the county attorney, Clayton would have his own way, and I don't, I'm speculating. Well. Yeah, I don't know, but this, I'm guessing these are maybe some of the options. But I don't, again, I don't, I think this probably, I think our job is to get there, to to do what we're charged with, with is writing the regulations and then effectuating them. I think the Board of County, it's up to the Board of County Commissioners to decide what to do.
So we do have a couple of commissioners in the room, and I would like to suggest, because I know I spoke with Haley about these regulations. And I think it would be really smart if we had an attorney who, and not that Clayton is not really smart, but Clayton's specific job is criminal and civil. And if we had a consultant that worked with. Towers. Period, specifically cell towers, communication towers, that could help us write that code, because it is complicated, and I do consider myself. Semi-smart, it depends on the day. But. I I can't do that. So that's my suggestion.
What are the, if we. I know we tabled it last meeting, so that means that like commission. County Commissioners don't even see the application. So even if it were. To fail approval tonight, it would still go to the Commissioners. And we also have limits on along.
Yeah, I mean, the other option is the applicant could choose to withdraw the application if they wanted. And proceed with the other routes that they seem to suggest that they think they have. Sound reasonable, but I'm. Not sure if they're right or not.
That's upgrading the current hour. More or less.
I think it would be an argument that there's an existing use that's been in place since two thousand and twelve, I think the date was, and. Been working with our planning administrator and county attorney to. Figure out how best to do it, maybe it's just replacing the pole as the pole exists today, maybe it's this, you know, I don't know, I don't know what would deem, be deemed appropriate, but. I think it's outside the CUP process. And probably in the hands of the planning administrator. What do you, and what do you think about that, Haley, do you think I'm wrong about that, or do you think?
I feel like saying it's not conforming and then just following. Process that if somebody else wanted something new, they would have to go through the process. You don't even have a building permit on. So I do think a building permit needs to be filed, I think. Cars. Over overriding the CUP. Process, I'm I'm conflicted about that. Because it was nonconforming to begin with, or at least. It is possible, if what we don't, I don't necessarily know how it was handled in two thousand and twelve, it sounds like in two thousand and twelve. They were told it was okay, but I again, we do not, I do not have that documented anywhere.
But am I, my reading of nonconforming would be that it's something that existed, it says before this resolution, which there's a couple of ways to read that, one is. Before the resolution period, or before the latest iteration of the resolution, it's not quite clear. What that means, but I think other nonconforming things we've seen have been things that preexisted the zoning regulations period. And and it would. We still don't have something on towers, so when we didn't back in two thousand and twelve, so I don't know how much has changed since then with our regulations.
I mean, does the fact that we don't have something on towers make it nonconforming? Even though, I mean, because if it.
Well, it does not by definition, I mean, not by my reading of the definition, that which is, I mean, I read it before, but let me read it again, just to. So a nonconforming structure, a structure lawfully erected or under construction prior to the effective date of this resolution, this resolution, I take to mean the zoning regulations. Which does not conform to applicable development standards, so this is. Something that preexisted the zoning regulations, we create the zoning regulations, oops, this thing doesn't fit within our zoning regulations, so it persists as a nonconforming structure, I don't think that's what this is. This was done. After our zoning regulations now, you know, whether it's a building, like this says lawfully erected, I I I take the applicant at face value, I believe in that he says it was done. Lawfully, but but we also don't have a building permit, and you know, there's questions to be sorted out around that, he says he has a recording from two thousand and twelve, which kudos, I can't, I don't have anything from two thousand and twelve, that's. Great that you have that, but um. Yeah, so I don't, I don't, it doesn't, my mind, my reading of that, it doesn't meet nonconforming. So then if it's not nonconforming, then there was another, the other argument that I could remember earlier was, well, private citizens are able to erect a thirty-foot tower. And and there are a district, how is this different? I don't, I don't, sitting here right now, I I'm, I struggle to think. You know, through the regulations on how that would be handled. I'm going to be good to get Clayton's way in on that. Argument too. So the options sound like. You know, we can vote on it one way or the other tonight. I think we have to vote on, I don't think we can make another recommendation to the county commissioners, I think we would need to make a motion on it one way or the other. Or the applicant could withdraw the application and choose to take another route. I think those are the options we have.
Okay, so with that, do you have any wish to withdraw your application? I think what we'd like to do is have you guys recommend you proceed with the recommendation to the county commission one way or the other, and then let us. Press that there, that way. Don't kick this down the road further. You know, and in some of your. Future tower discussions. There is a document I recommend you guys look at. Which is FCC. Eighteen hyphen one three three. FCC eighteen hyphen one three. There's a substantial amount of regulations in there that. You guys will run up against when it relates to towers.
We would welcome you back to comment on the towers when we're working on it as well, on that draft. And and any, any other experts.
Please silence your phone. Any other. Discussion from the board.
Really, I'll just do a reminder that, so when we do, we we decided a while back, we used to do. Motions, sometimes in the affirmative, sometimes in the negative, and we decided as a best practice, we would just always make them in the affirmative for sake of clarity. And do you, how do you have language prepped for?
I do not.
If I have something easily accessible. And maybe real quickly, we can also clarify whether we're making motions related to both a conditional use permit and a variance, or just a conditional use permit, are you proposing moving forward with this with the thirty-foot tower?
I'm mixed on that, honestly, if we're going to continue this process, I think I'd like to at least pass it on to the county commissioners on the fifty foot, and then we can have that discussion. If you guys would like to recommend that you only approve it to thirty, that's certainly.
Do we have a variance application?
No, I don't think.
So that, that.
Correct, and and. I don't know how this fits in some counties zoning rules. Our experience in most counties in Wyoming is that because a conditional use permit has the highest level of oversight, doesn't usually require a variance in addition to it, because it's already being. It's not required, then a variance would.
Though, yeah, well. I I was surprised to hear that you weren't told, that you were told that you didn't need a variance, because as long as I've been on the board, any tower application that exceeded the height was always done a variance and a conditional use permit, so. We obviously don't have the folks here tonight that told you that, and we can't ask them why they told you that, but. That was, that was a surprise to me.
Didn't we discuss that the last meeting that we did need a variance, though?
Right, based, yes, that's what we discussed.
Okay.
But I think we also got heard from the applicant that they were willing to do the thirty foot, so I think it was a little bit unclear about whether we needed to be considering the variance or not. So I guess a question then. The applicant would like to proceed with the fifty foot, we don't actually have a variance application, can we proceed with the motion related to a variance application that we don't have?
I mean, I don't think that we proceed with a variance application, since we don't have it, we would proceed with the request for conditional use, and however, that vote goes, it moves on, and. If there's something else required, then. I assume they would hear that at the.
So the application as presented is what we're voting on as a conditional use permit for a fifty-foot tower?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And. And you want this, the fifty-foot tower? Without the variance, instead of the upgrade on the thirty-foot tower that you have right now.
In all honesty, we would take either, we're just at this point where fifty foot there, additional twenty feet will help the surrounding community. For service even more than the thirty.
Right. But you were, you were told otherwise, but there there are rules, you know, planning and zoning rules about variances beyond the thirty-foot tower in rural residential.
And I understand that.
So I mean, that as as a planning and zoning board. You know, we have to adhere to that unless you're willing to.
And if you guys would like to approve it to go on at the thirty, we can certainly. Certainly accept that. At your mercy, what you're willing to.
Pushing language right now.
How do, so if they're willing to. Yes, have us approve it as a, or vote on it. As a thirty-foot tower, that is an amendment to the application.
Yeah, how do you?
I, this is a, I I don't know, this is the first for me. I, my suggestion would be that we vote on the application. And that the exceptional and unusual circumstances require some communication with the Board of County Commissioners to fully explain the circumstance. Maybe prior to the meeting. So that we don't surprise them on the day of the meeting with a bunch of oddball stuff, to bring them up to speed so that they can make their decision accordingly.
It could also be voted on. I guess. With the. Condition. That they get variants. Sure, if they. Find out doing.
Yeah.
And if not, then it would be limited to thirty feet.
Accurate, that would be a condition. Well, this one, I just wanted to use for the motion language. Want to, that was something for certain phrasing that we usually use. All right, I'm just gonna. Wing it a little bit here. Okay. Yeah, I think we just don't have it, okay. Okay, so as I said earlier. I'll make the motion in the affirmative, we have, as a reminder, we have for conditional uses, we have. Two findings we have to make, the, in the, what we've been doing as of late is making a motion. With both findings included. And just typically how it goes is in a, if if you can't say yes. To. One or more of the findings, then you're logically, the. Your vote would be a nay, if you can agree with both of the findings, then you're logically, your vote would be a yay, so.
Great. Counting gang violence, great. Counting gang violence, great.
Ah, shit.
Counting gang violence, great. 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 Counting gang violence. Great. Counting gang violence. Great. Counting gang violence. Great.
Yeah.
Well, now we know. Now we know.
Sorry about that.
It happens.
All right, apologize to everybody for that. All right, so um. Any questions or? Anything before I move forward with making the motion? All right, so having reviewed and considered the eight criteria for a conditional use permit, I propose that we find that the proposed location of this use is in accordance with the purposes of this resolution in the district in which. The site is located and that the proposed location of the use. And the conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health. Safety or welfare or materially injurious to properties. Or improvements in the vicinity and. I move to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve this request. As. Presented with the following condition. That uh, if the tower. Uh, uh, is proposed exceeding thirty feet in height. That a variance be obtained. Does that meet your? Okay.
Okay, um, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So there's a motion and a second. The lower communications request for additional use with the. Condition for variance. Do I have to repeat all that? Okay. Yeah, okay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion fails. But we'll still move to the Board of County Commissioners. Okay. All right.
So do, when is it in the front of the Board of County Commissioners? Is it? Okay, so. That's, that's your real decision makers there, so go to that meeting.
All right, we need to move on. We need a break.
So let's keep going.
Okay. Um, so the.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the second item on the agenda is a conditional use permit request for a guest ranch located at eight seven four seven U S highway one ninety one in Boulder. Haley, you want to give us the? Overview?
It's a lot. You're doing a great job. Long as I can see it too. Can you still see it? Can you?
I need to get rid of the head canceler.
We need a twelve year old.
They did, I know.
You know, we should be able to have some type of firmware that that doesn't happen.
To restrict the sound coming in.
Understand.
It's, it's work.
All right, we got it. Our next application is for a conditional use request or conditional use permit request for a guest ranch. Eighty seven forty seven U S highway one ninety one. This is in Boulder. Um, this is just a general where the property is right now. I'll turn on some of the surroundings. The zoning in the area. There is other agricultural zoning. There's R R, um, M H. Uh, there is this. All that RS one down here with that RV park to the south. Um, there are multiple accesses to the site right now. The main access is from U S highway one ninety one. That access, it, it appears if you're out there, there's Front Street that runs north, south. The access is primarily for those residents. It's not necessarily a continuation of Front Street. But there are some people who do use it that from Front Street. Just wanted to point that out. And then there's also Millard Point Road. This is access from the north side. And this is more of a residential area up here. Um, so this is right now, there are two cabins located on the north side of the property and that's what this is, that access is used for. It has been questioned too, as far as what is permitted for access there if there is an easement in place. So I do plan on, and I talked to. Mister Ellis about that as far as the easement, so we will look into that a little bit further. Um, and then. There's another access. I'm missing. Is there one on the south too?
Um, there is, because we go, you know, we kind of grip away.
Okay. So those are the main accesses. The, the primary access again is from the highway. The request is for a conditional use for a guest ranch. Most of. Everything is in this area on the property. I will give you time to go through some of this too, and I'll. This is where most of the, the residential, um, the barns and everything are located down here with two of the cabins. Located on the north side and. A plan was also provided with the application for phasing for this guest ranch and this would be. Um, organized through the Boulder Crest Foundation. Um, Albert, I guess, do you guys have questions or do you want to turn it over to Albert?
Come up there. I don't hear well.
That's all right. Anybody have questions for us staff before we invite?
Are there, are there any existing like? Historic conditional uses or any other things that are for this property that? That you're aware of?
Bert, did you do camping or anything up here at any point?
Yeah, um, then Mister Ellis or if you have a representative, you can come up or we can bring you a mic if you want to stay there.
Probably I hear you better up there.
All right.
Please get there.
So you're free to give us additional information if you'd like or.
Okay, it's, um. I guess, I don't know if you all read the introduction on my application. I don't know if everybody has, excuse me, maybe I'm not talking a lot enough. But um. Basically. As you can tell, getting to the age where you have to know what happens next. Um, and how to dispose of this property. And in my mind, the very highest and best use for it is if I could donate it. To a charity that serves veterans and first responders, they would keep it running similar to what is running now. Um, and utilize the facilities as we had built them. So basically a smaller llama operation, which that we had, you know, we downsized it years ago. Um, and then as we downsized it, our main, main hay fields. Um, that we, we used to hay the whole thing and sell about half our hay, kept what we needed. Um, now we're. Um, mainly hay and. You know, the main hay fields, about half of them and. We're then grazing cattle on the other half to then keep the ditch banks clean and the roads clean. And so anyway, the intended use will maintain the main hay fields similar to what they are now. The mixed hay and cattle grazing and what I call the inside pastures. The main hay fields are about a hundred acres. And uh, they produce two hundred and fifty tons, more or less. Um, and the inside hay fields will be. I visualize this and hopefully we can make it. Come to fruition of a breeding herd of about forty to fifty llamas. Um, growing them into. Maturity before they're sold as backers. And you know, the background is. Um. You know, llama is built for this kind of work or an endangered breed by far and have been for a long time. Um, and that was the reason we got started in the first place. Um. You know, trying to preserve the old, I've been packing llamas about forty years. And trying to get, you know, preserve some of the old lines before they all disappeared. And that's what we continue to do. And we're hoping to get an operator that can move here that will continue that mission in addition to just raising llamas. And over the years, you know, we outfitted with them, we rented them, we, you know, bred, sold animals. Um, I really consider. And obviously I'm prejudiced, having worked with them for forty years. Um, to be very therapeutic and I see that. With all our guests, people we sold to, our guests that we outfitted to, people we rented to. Um, they're. A little bit of a life-changing animal for a lot of people. And so to me, that tied in really well with trying to serve. You know, some people that I feel. You know, I led a charmed life. I know a lot of people haven't and um, just wanted to give back a little bit, but also I consider it. The highest and best use for the property. Um. To be able to keep it basically what it is instead of chopping it up. And I'd like to see it stay the way it is.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if anything else are questions about that. Make, make any sense to anybody?
That's a good introduction.
I Boulder Crest, you know, I read. Um. I'm somewhat delayed in coming to this conclusion, uh, you know. But my wife had dementia for a number of years and she had the. Her only actor was this house. So we couldn't dispose of it until she passed. Um, so I've been reaching, researching for a long time because this was in my mind. And uh, I thought I had a good candidate in the Gary Sinise Foundation. But no, they don't because they do this similar work. But they don't accept real estate other than to sell. Um, so I did make contact with Boulder Crest. Um, and they, they're operating three similar facilities. Um, not llamas, uh, they do horse therapy in a couple of them, but. Um, I've convinced them that llama therapy will be just as good and maybe more appealing to most families, actually. Um, and not really therapy animals, just being around them, watching the babies. Um, sitting, you know, our, my wife and I, no matter how busy we were. We took a three o'clock break and we went and sat on a bench. Uh, llama pastures and we had benches everywhere. And that's kind of what I foresee for them and I've convinced. Uh, Boulder Crest that this is going to be a good for them. And they've been out and they go to the property. They're coming again this coming week. Um, and they, and they see it. Um, but uh, they're not what you call therapy animals. Where, you know, they come into a room and you, you know, like, and llamas do do that, but not these llamas. We're still wanting to breed back llamas. You know, not the ones that are going to go into a hospital bedroom and. You know, give kisses to the, the patient. Um, so anyway, they, uh, you know. I, I love what they do as a foundation that meets what I was hoping to. Um, find the use for and. Um. You know, basically they laid out a plan. They have a program that's um, R and R, um. Rest and wrist, wristband, they call it for. Uh, these families that have either been traumatized or whatever, for whatever reason. And uh, where they can come for to stay for. You know, a few days or up to seven days. And um, and they intend to operate it that way to start with, with the existing facilities. They do think they would like to make an addition at some point in the future. Um, but we realize that would be under a whole new different permit and different request. Um, and they, they do a, a, a menu of different programs. Um, one of them, which is um, a warrior path program. Where they would like to have a, if they decide to do this. Um, they would have a bunkhouse for like ten serving them that they keep in separate. And they don't run the family programs at the same time they run the. Um, the Boulder Path Program and that it's kind of a, uh, they did, that used to be seven days. Now it's five days. Um, those people come, um, you know, they're um, recovering from post traumatic stress and they're showing them how. You know, it's a forge a new life and uh, it's about, it's five days of classroom type. Um. During the day, uh, activity and uh, and then they do, it's a ninety day program, but they're only going to be there five days. They come, they stay there five days. They'll eat their meals up in the lodge, which is the main house. Um, and then they have their bedrooms, uh, individual bedrooms and two bedrooms sharing the bathroom. And uh, and I don't know, is Ken on? Did he make it? Is he? He would explain everything better than I do. He, I know he tried to, he was gonna try to get on.
Is that the gentleman from?
Yes, the, uh, the founder of Boulder Crest and he and the CEO are coming out again here, the twenty seventh, twenty third, twenty fourth.
Agenda on the calendar had two different meetings. Okay.
But it wasn't fixed until like five fifteen, so.
But you sent everyone the.
Tried my best to fix it.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'll turn it over to the commission for questions for the applicant.
I'm curious, and I don't know, did, was it Boulder Crest that filled out this application or did you fill, are you both?
But they can't accept it until. You know, it's going right to them as soon as. Basically, excepting we can do the paperwork. I'm not waiting till I die to will it.
That would be hard logistically, yeah. I was just curious if you could explain, they talked about in phase one due diligence, they say ensure that the county will allow Boulder Crest operating ability through adequate zoning, so that makes sense. That's what we're talking about tonight. Tax exemption because they're a nonprofit, so they want to make sure. But then it, then there's kind of a more general statement and overall support of future phases. I, I, I was just curious if you could shed some light on what's that mean?
I don't. I don't understand that myself.
Okay.
You know, I think overall, you know, we, I talked about it after we put that in. We put that in last minute and kind of I wouldn't intend to do it. We, we talked about it since then. And what he wants to do, you know, he, you know, he thinks he wants possibly future phases. You know, if it works, we'd like to be able to have room for like two more families at a time because that's what the house, you know, we built our house, it's a three generational house, three generations have lived there, plus my wife and I live at office there. So it's big and some of that like office space could be converted, converted into another suite or so to serve another family. But when we talked again here recently, last few days, he says, you know, let's just go with what we got, prove we're a good neighbor, be part of the community and get, you know, hopefully, you know, gain the full support of everybody. You know, and I do too, you know, I want, you know, I'm not wanting to cause trouble for anybody. And I know there's some opposition and I know there's, you know, it affects everybody. It won't, the actual activity is going to be less than it was when we were outfitting. You know, written and breeding and selling and, you know, llamas back and forth to the mountains and everything else. So it is going to be less intense. But I know he wants to prove it up before he thinks about going any further.
So is that, I know the application includes Phase Four, which is the classroom bunkhouse.
That's the path.
So potentially future phases somewhere down the road.
That Phase Four possibly. He, their Texas facility only does that path program. And so he started thinking about a little bit, you know, if Texas only does path, maybe Wyoming would only do family. And, you know, part of it is a little bit difficulty and expense of getting here compared to.
Although we're way better than Texas.
And we're way better than Texas and, you know, I, I agree. I agree, just being in Wyoming is relaxing to most people.
I actually wanted to, I should have started off with just saying, you know, I really commend you for even entertaining this path and really respect and appreciate your support of veterans. So I want to say thank you for that, actually, to start with. And while I appreciate that a lot, I will have a lot of questions for you. Don't take that the wrong way. We got to do our job still, but I really appreciate that you're doing that. So I guess one of the things you talk about, like it's a lot less intense. And again, this is, there's a lot of ambiguity here because we don't quite know if we're talking about, it sounds like now, maybe it's like, let's just get started and then the prove we're a good neighbor and then maybe we'll do bigger stuff down the road. So some of these things are a moving target in that way. So, but I was questioning the, you know, the application says like 12 to 15 vehicles per day. But when I started, when I looked at all those phases and I thought, okay, we got 10, you know, 10, is it a 10-bedroom bunkhouse? We got, you know, three or four other houses, we got this, you know, you start to add that up and it's a lot of people, the family R and R stuff. I think, you know, those families are going to want to go into town and that's great. That's one of the benefits, it's good for the town, but it just starts to, it just starts me scratching my head a little bit and saying, is it real? Is it realistic that is 12 to 15 trips per day? This sounds like quite a bit more than that to me, which is not on its face bad. I just want to, I want to be, you know, as precise as we can about what's the reality of this situation. I think in the regard that it's right off the highway, you know, the, like, it's not as impactful as, I mean, some of your neighbors have requested to use the main entrance off, to have the main entrance be off of the highway if this moved forward. I think that would make a lot of sense as opposed to using a side road where it would be a lot more impact, things like that. But just for us, that's one of the things we have to consider, impact on the, on the roads and things. And so, you know, what do you think? Do you think that 12 to 15 vehicles per day is realistic? Or do you think it's quite a bit more than that?
You know, the path program then run at the same time the families are there. So the bunkhouse won't be used at the same time the main house is used. And, you know, basically they consider their average family unit to be three and serving maybe five at a time. So, you know, there'll be five families at a time, you know, four or five, depending on how many kids.
Right.
And obviously, three seems small, but there are significant number that are going to be single parent families.
Right, right. And probably a car per family, not multiple cars.
So that might not be realistic. You know, it might be more than that, depends on like, they also said, I wish he was here. But, you know, basically, there's three types of people that come, the family people. You know, some come and they stay there five days, seven days, wherever it is, and they never leave. There's some that basically go out every day to see the sights. You know, maybe do hike one of the trails, go to the museum of the mountain man, whatever, have meal outside. And then there, and a third of them do some of each. You know, they go out a couple of times maybe and they stay there part of the time.
I don't think I have any other questions right now, but maybe more later.
I have a question about your water and sewer infrastructure. Is when you mentioned you may have to put some new water and sewer infrastructure.
If we build that bunkhouse.
And that's dealing with the phase.
Everything else has their own.
Everything else is solid as it is. And can handle like continuous through the year.
Right, yeah.
Amount of guests.
And actually, we just, this last year rebuilt the leach field in the main house, 50% larger than what it was. But it's served us for, you know, 20 years, 20 some odd years. But we, at times, you know, we've had meetings of our Cora Llama Association, board meetings at our place multiple times, four or five days at a time. And, you know, we've had 15 people in our house and we've served meals of more than 20. Because every trip we made, we had a pre-trip get together barbecue with all our guests and, and then our employees too. So mostly, you know, a lot of our trips, most of our trips were 10 to 15 people. And, and we had, mostly had a staff of about seven during the summer. We had interns, college kid, vet student interns. And that's basically who stayed in the cabins in the summers. And then we rented them in the winter. So, you know, we, the house did serve the same quantity of people we're talking about wanting to stay there. And my mother-in-law lived there, of course, my son lived there and we, like I say, you know, we had three suites for three generations.
Okay, thank you. And then another question I have is, there has been some public complaint about the possible state, you know, Phase Four development of buildings. And one of our guidelines is creativity in the design of the project. So is there some thought to where if you, you know, decide to improve upon where that may not affect your neighbors or how to make that to where it's okay with them?
I did, you know, and I've been, I talked to Tyler quite a bit and I understand his concern. And I sympathize with it, I do. But he made an appointment to come and see where I intended to put this when we, if we come, if, if and when we get to it. And there's a little chunk of wasteland that's actually, it's 1,000 feet from his house down towards the creek. And it's a dry spot where we could have leach fields and stuff like that. And then right now I do, you know, I've always sprinkled it to keep the weeds down and mowed it, even when I had llamas in there. You know, basically it's out of the water table and no irrigation water goes to it. But I do sprinkle it for it. So, you know, that's the ideal place to do it. And I think it will have, I really do think it'll have minimal effect. And, you know, we talked about things like, you know, tree screen. You know, I'm up for anything, you know, no lights on that side of it. You know, if we do go to, and I'm not going to be here, you know, realistically. So, you know, I, I'm sure Boulder Crest is not going to do something that's going to cause real, you know, you know, maybe seeing a house out there is irritating 1,000 feet away. But I don't think significant, anything significant. And that, to him, that's significant, I understand that too.
But there might be some flexibility.
Oh, there's plenty of flex, yeah, a lot of, yeah. There's flexibility, you know, wanting to put it, you know, like I say, want to be a good neighbor and have come to that end of it, may not, you know, you may not do anything other than family.
I do have a question.
Sure.
I, I think it's wonderful what you're looking at, passing your land on too. That's great.
Thank you.
Can you tell me, and maybe, Haley, you can tell me, but right now you have 207 acres of ag land. How much of that it's going to be used up for these through Phase Four? Do you know?
Phase Four, there's that particular pasture that Phase Four is in, we don't put animals in it anymore, haven't for a long time. It's the creek bottom and the willows and this little section of, I can point it out. Yeah, you can see right up there, see what's kind of white there?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's because nothing grows there really.
Right, but, but it's still considered agricultural land.
It's still agricultural, yeah, it's pasture. And it's been part of our pasture, but that, if you can see the fences.
I see the dark, yeah. Well, I, I have it up here too.
Okay, this, this, in this.
Oh, he's got a corner.
We no longer pull llamas in this pasture, haven't for years. We use it for training. Both, we, we trim paths for the wells, zigzag and obstacles and stuff from the duck under leap over, stuff like that. And then also the grassy parts that do grow good grass, they're, they train their picket training on that. So we don't actually, it's still ag use, but not everything else, all the other pastures, we actually had animals in. And now the hay fields, as we talked about, which are, when I talked about inside pastures, that's, that's these through here and we do those, we do grow hay on those. We grow hay and we cut it on those, when there's, even when there's llamas in there. And the llamas used to come out and just part of the, this is now the main hay fields. And we used to have llamas out in the main hay fields too, back when we had 200. And they kept the ditch banks and the roads clear and they hardly touched any hay. So we took them off at the hay and then we wintered, we fed out there for a chunk of about 60 of them, female herd. Well, we plowed ground and fed with a round veil feeder. But I doubt we'll ever do that again, is one reason there, I let cattle on there now. They have cross parasites that I spent 20 years trying to get rid of.
Yeah, I, I was just trying to get a, a good idea of how much ag land would be used up for the Phase Four.
Yeah, virtually no beneficial ag land.
Right, right. But still, I, I have to look at it from the agricultural.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you know if there's plans to use the venue for like public events, weddings, things of that nature?
I certainly wouldn't think so.
And they talk about onsite recreational activities, including like archery. They talk about building a, not maze, but some other term.
It's kind of a maze, they, they do that. It, and I haven't talked too much about why would I say it on all their properties.
Yeah, I don't need to know, I, I'm just curious, what are the other, you know, are there other recreational activities that are planned?
I'm hoping large percentage of the people will want to interact with llamas and actually go in the barn and when we're training krias and work, you know, krias, the babies. You know, our procedure was to work with them every day for like five minutes, no more than five minutes. They go through a box with them and you do a little bit handling this and that. They, you teach them, day three, you teach them to go get weighed by themselves. They go stand on a scale, which to me is the basis of the relationship. And people find that fascinating, that they can come in there and start doing something like that with, come off the street and be able to work with a kria. But that's the, you know, that's part of our whole training program to get the packers with the attitudes we want. So I anticipate guests being in the barn and doing stuff and brushing and taking llamas through the maze and stuff like that. I think that'll be way more popular than Ken thinks.
All right.
I'm hoping it will. And on up, you know, and saddling, you know, putting packs on them, taking them out for longer walks through the, I always count three or four miles of snow plowed because we do train all winter too on the ranch. So, you know, we go out and take them for an hour walk, what we have plowed. And watching the cows, irrigating and just being part of something foreign to them.
So I know we mentioned this at the beginning about access off of Mallard. I know that was a couple of the letters that we received in regards to that. Do you know, or have any idea if Phase Four will be accessed or plans to be accessed from the main entrance?
Main entrance for sure. There won't be any cars out there at Phase Four.
Okay, thank you.
It's my understanding that the main entrance is going to be off of 191.
Right.
Okay.
And we are gonna, we haven't applied for permit yet because we don't know where that far. But we will enlarge that entry. And Ken wants to put a, a formal entry, you know, with a sign and stuff, you know. We did that one at one time, but it brought it out. Yeah.
Anything else from the board? Right. Thank you, you can stay up here if you want, we might have more questions.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we'll now open it up to public comment in the room first. And again, please state your name, we'll bring you a microphone where you can come up. And address.
Good evening, John Richter, live over here on 18 Mallard Point Road. And basically across the street from Albert's, a house that he's building on Lot 23. I'm just right across from him. My property backs up to the ranch as does the property where he's building the house for his son. Am I coming through okay on the mic? Okay, good. The wife always tell you, we can hear you everywhere. Okay, all right. So my, my property backs up against there. I have a couple of questions. What are the plans for Mallard Point Road? Okay. And secondly, is there an existing easement right now? If so, what kind of an easement? And is there any plans in the future for Boulder Crest Foundation to use any part of Boulder Commons? Okay, either walking down to the ponds, walking through the area or anything of that sort? Okay, either walking down to the ponds, walking through the area, or anything of that sort? We talk about the Phase Four up in the north end of the property here. And so right now, it's my understanding from listening, that's not a go forward right now, wanting to see how things go with the first phase and potentially later. But I think in the paperwork, it calls for that phase construction to start next year in June, is that correct? And that's supposed to go for a year?
We'll answer questions after.
Okay, very good, so, so if, if things go good on the first phase and we go to Phase Four to build up in the north end of the property, would there be potential increases in activity, I mean, other structures being built in addition to Phase Four, if this thing really goes? There's three other Boulder Crest properties in the U.S., how big are those in comparison to what's being proposed here in Boulder, Wyoming? And what are the potential square, what is the proposed square footage of these bunk houses, offices, cabins? And the, I heard mention of some sort of a recreation area or center where people were going to be getting together also. What, what's the square footage of these things here? The existing two cabins, what are the future plans for those two cabins? There was one thing I wanted to mention before I got started, and first, I respect a person's right to use his or her lands as they see fit, so long as it doesn't adversely affect their neighbors, okay? So I respect what you're trying to do here, Albert, and just kind of looking out for what's happening on Mallard and other areas in the Boulder area. And, you know, it wasn't spoke about clearly in the things that was online, so I wanted to ask these questions here. You know, Mallard Road Meander, which is the next road over, and Front Street and everything. You know, these are rural residential areas, you know, people didn't buy land in this area for commercial activity. And, you know, on Mallard, you know, we have three existing homes. Mr. Ellis is building a fourth home, looks to be a very nice home he's building right now. And just have seniors enjoying the quiet area, walking their dogs or just taking a walk themselves. So, you know, we're very concerned as far as what this thing may turn into. And we enjoy the quiet aspect of living here in Boulder, Wyoming. The folks that live there definitely aren't interested in the bright lights of the big city. I also wanted to go ahead, I did go ahead and send in a letter, and it's posted online. I'd like to go ahead and read it, seeing that I sent it in, I thought I'd share it with the folks here. And this was a response to the letters that we all received. Like I said, I'm at 18 Mallard Point Road. Bought that land in 2003 and moved in in 2004. And I would like to request if this conditional use permit is approved for a guest ranch, that Mallard Point Road will not be used as access for this new venture, either for ongoing operations or especially for the construction and development of that land in there. The reason for this request is, in the past, Mallard Point was used for access for the two rental cabins that's at the end of Mallard Road, just as you grew into Mr. Ellis's ranch. Currently, currently, these cabins are not being rented and have not been for the past several years. During the time the cabins were being rented, it became an issue with the renter, with the renters speeding up and down Mallard Road. I'm sorry, I'm kind of dry mouth right now. You know, it became an issue to the point where myself and other residents on Mallard Point Road had verbal confrontations with the renters. And I called and spoke with Mr. Ellis several times on this. Mr. Ellis would speak with the renters, things would get better for a while, then eventually go back the way it was. And it got to the point where we installed three sets of speed bumps and road signs on Mallard Road. And again, Mallard Road is a rural residential, not a commercial access road. And those are my thoughts and concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room?
Yeah.
Hi, Albert. I could beat you up.
You can beat me up anyway.
Anyway, this is on, right? Anyway, me and Albert.
Go ahead and say your name.
Tyler Wilson, and I live on 27 Front Street, Boulder, Wyoming. Anyway, I went and talked to Albert, because me and Albert's known each other quite a long time. And we discussed where my water, the water had come off the ditch irrigation, how we'd solve it. And we discussed it, it could be solved. The water comes down here and furnishes all the people in this area irrigation water, and I got to deal with it. And Albert, and it comes out right here into the slough and goes into that creek. So we discussed it, and then my house is where all this junk is. Anyway, there's a white building here, and I'm straight out here. And I guess Albert and me got a little kind of understanding, but we kind of didn't know exactly where it's going to be built, because it showed you a square here. I guess right here, Albert, right here, right here, so it looked up in the creek. So I thought, you know, we wanted to build some more cabins, and my house has been here, it's got a big seven by seven window, and the only view I got is right through here, through, through here, there ain't no way to look this way or that way or that way. That house built in 1903, and that window looks out over this way to the mountains. What I was concerned about is this company building, buildings in here and stuff and blocking my view from looking that way. And it was built down here, and in Front Street. I fought a lot of zoning, but, you know, I'm like Albert. We shed a couple tears in his house together, he did, me did. He's got feelings and I got feelings, so we voiced our opinion, I sent a letter to you guys. And the only way I want to do it, I want to ask the man that's going to design it. Because he's got a dream, and I have, I, I don't have a dream, but I live there. But he's got a dream, and he wanted to go to the best place that he could leave it to. And I respect him for that. And so I don't know what kind of people's coming, because, you know, like families of, of first responders, and I don't know if it's postmatic stress people or not, but I worry about that, because I had brothers in the army and they were normal. And then they flip out and they get real bad, and I had one that come from Vietnam, never made it home. And he spent his life in a home, and people, people that don't know that, you can look normal, I mean, I might be normal, he might be normal, we look normal, but things happen. So we're going to have to have the police department on call on them people, I mean, it's reality, I'm telling you, it's reality. So our police department, but the view, but down Front Street, I thought Donna and Burke Steel would build a trailer court. And people come down, come down, and it was during the boom. And Donna lied to me in here, said they were going to put trailers in there, and the first thing they did, they brought 19 man camps in there and placed them. And there was 52 people in that, that place, and I called and made them move it, and the zoning, made them move it, and put trailer houses back in there. So then people were coming welding, when the welding business is on, a guy from Diamond Welding bought a place right here, and he brought seven welding trucks in there, in a 44-foot trailer and 14 feet wide, they pulled in there every morning, every one in the morning, and they did. I don't think they ever asked Albert Ellis. But they did come out of there and use that street going through private property, and they never even asked this man. So he had to stay there and probably says, you know, why is them guys coming through my yard? They never asked him, so out of all the respect for Albert and his son, I just hope, and it probably will, because Albert's got, he wants to put it in trust, wants to get it done, because he has health problems and, and the act, the company that's building this, whatever, are they gonna, are they going to develop this and come to you, which Albert did, which he knows? He don't know what the company is going to do down his life when he's gone. Are they going to want money more for you and design this hayfield into more stuff? And bigger buildings? Or what, you know, but I think we need to see the whole plan before we go flapping stuff in there. But I don't want to beat up Albert, and he needs to get home tonight, too, because he is older, and, and now let you bury, he needs to get home, so I'm going to stop right there.
Sir, thank you. Other comments in the room?
I'm Kevin Williams, I actually have two pieces of property adjoining this project. And first off, I'd like to commend you, I mean, it's a noble gesture, that's awesome that you want to donate your land. I, due to lack, or actually me being lazy, I received the letter back on September 2nd, it just called out a guest ranch. And being a strong proponent of property rights, I was kind of like, yeah, no big deal. And then about 3 o'clock this afternoon, I found out a little bit more about it, and maybe I'm a little bit overreacting right now, but I am concerned, I mean, we just seen what that idiot did on here. The world is not a safe place anymore. I would strongly recommend that if this moves forward, that there's a lot of consideration given to make sure that there is psychiatric care professionals licensed onsite if we're going to invite this type of activity into our neighborhood there. I shared the sentiments with John, Mallard Point Road, I don't have a house on there yet, but my son and I and my wife had bought a lot, we plan on building out there. I would hope that that's not part of the access. It is a very peaceful neighborhood, it needs to stay that way. I don't know, I'm not good at talking in public, but definitely concerned, I, I feel the letter was a gross misrepresentation of what's going on. I, a guest ranch, I could live with that to an extent, right? But I think there needs to be some investigation into this Boulder Foundation before it just moves ahead with a unanimous decision, but that's all I got, thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Smythe, I live at 19 Mallard Point, right across the street from John and Sammy here, and I just want to piggyback on what the last Tyler and Kevin and John had stated. The concerns of using Mallard Point as an access is, is worrisome, to say the least. And I, again, I'd like everyone else, I think it's a very noble, you know, cause that Mr. Ellis wants to do. But, you know, the questions brought up by the board before, how many people? 500 to 750 people a year, they were saying, and then 15 vehicles, it doesn't sound like the numbers are lining up there of how many people we're going to have coming in and out of there, so. Yeah, I just have that type of concern that the traffic on 353, too, is, is not what it used to be. We have bicyclists and people going up to sandy openings and mountain springs is up there and gnolls. So it's, it's quite a bit of traffic, especially on Front Street where the curve comes there, it's gotten to be pretty dangerous, so, anyway, I just thought I'd throw that out there, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make one more comment? Mother neighbor Ed and Debbie live right there on 353 next to me, they weren't able to attend. Ed's been helping his son outfit and wasn't able to make the meeting, but asked me to speak for him and his wife that they were opposed to the project.
Anybody else in the room? Anybody online have any comment? And go ahead and unmute and. There we go.
Think I got it right. Dan Bailey, I think there's a lot of things to be considered, as these people live close by have mentioned, and I don't live close by, but I certainly have been vocal about guest ranch uses, which are basically a hotel that are plopped in the middle of an agricultural residential area. And I guess I'd like to ask a few questions, or if it's going to be considered, certainly to make some restrictions, is that it's a noble cause what he's suggesting, but the what, what's, you know, what's, what can happen in the future is that it can change ownership, it, they could change use of it, it could be increased in size, so I think all those things need to be considered and restricted. And if it changes in size, you know, maybe that, if you're going to consider a CUP for it, that it had a limited amount of time so that it can be revisited instead of being a blanket one, I know that that can be somewhat complex if they're putting an infrastructure for it. So such as the location of future building sites, it was addressed, you know, how big are the buildings going to be, the quantity of people that are going to be onsite? I don't think any of that's been defined. Another question is, is this, will this truly be incidental to the agricultural purpose, or is this the main purpose of the ranch? Because that is one of the requirements in the planning zoning regulations. And I think the final one is that one of the findings that must be made by planning zoning is this going to be detrimental to public safety, and it seems like there can be a real concern, especially with the, what the type of things that go on nowadays, and that sometimes the people that are veterans is great that they are, that they served their country, but they may be some people that are mentally unstable, and how is that going to affect or impact that people are living close by? Those are my comments, I'm, I'm opposed to it, I'm opposed to hotels and residential and agricultural areas, and I think that guest ranches are another name for a hotel. Those are my comments, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else online have comment? I don't see. Is Ed waving at us? Or just adjusting his camera? Okay. Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and give the time back to you to address. Who's in charge of charging these things? Okay. Thank you. I thought I was quiet, but that's how I talk sometimes. So we'll turn the time back to you to respond to. Any of those comments or questions? I've got some notes if you want help.
Probably. You know, basically, you know, the way I read the regulation, there's. There's a main lodge, which is the house, which is a finite, finite. You know, facility and sleeping rooms, so. It seems to me it can expand really beyond what the house conserve as far as meals and. You know, you know, basically it says the lodge where the meals are served. So I don't think, I think it's got a finite. Boundary right there, in my opinion, and once again. You know, it's hard to make predictions, especially about the future, but. Yeah, I don't see it expanding beyond. Where I showed right there, because that's really the only building sites under the. Current conditions. You know, maybe if we get. You know, under curtailment and lose irrigation water, it'll be dry places, but. Once again, we don't. I think that's, I can't even think that far out. I don't think anybody can. And I'm sure that restrictions are. Accepted or not accepted, but expected, let's put it that way. You know, obviously we're not going to put in a. Hyatt.
Yeah.
Someone asked about easements or their existing easements that are relevant for us to consider in this application? I think it was specific to Mallard Road.
You know. Basically, I'd have to go back to Rio Verde for that, but there was a, you know, obviously we didn't want to cut off our access. We made the subdivision, so we did. Cover that with an easement, but I have no, you know, my wife, I worked outside for fifty years and she worked inside, so. I have no idea where to find any of that stuff without going back to. Rio Verde.
And can you speak to, one of the questions was just kind of. What happens with the existing structures, the existing cabins? Could you speak to a little bit about how those will be?
It would be used probably most likely as employee housing again, and their address is twenty eight Mallard Point.
And so the, I, because I, right, that makes sense. I had kind of forgotten about the staff, employee housing would be there. The families, where will the families stay? Is that in new structures or is it?
It's going to be, for now, it's going to be in the main house.
In the main house, okay.
And, and there's, you know, there's two houses up front, one going to be for ranch manager. You know, most likely the folks that run the llama operation. And then the other one for the Boulder crest, the two at the entry for the Boulder crest director.
And what, what is the relationship exactly? Because obviously Boulder Crest is not in the business of llamas. Their, their business is something entirely different, so. But there will, the llama operation will continue, so what, what's the relationship between?
Same as the hay and the cattle grazing.
Right, but what, as far, the folks that are the employees and the ranch manager that are running the llama operation in the hayen, are they? Boulder Crest staff or they? Of Boulder Crest, okay. And Boulder Crest is committed to that.
Yeah. Most likely.
Okay.
The original people we had intended may not be able to do it. Or they may.
Okay.
When is the real question?
And it, well, let me, I'll move on to another one, because I think I've got the answer there is the, the square footage of the bunkhouse or do you know anything about that?
You know, basically. If it fits the Texas one, you know, not count the porches. The rooms are pretty Spartan. Maybe. You know. Eight by twelve for the, for the individual rooms, so there'd be ten of those. You know. So the eight by twelve, nine by twelve, let's say eight by twelve, eight by twelve, with ninety six square feet per room, ten rooms, nine hundred and sixty for that.
Can you speak into the mic so folks can hear you just?
Well, you know, I'm speculating a little bit, but basically they're, the bunkhouse, if they build it. The one, the plans I've seen of one, the ones in Texas are basically each individual has like an eight by twelve room. And then two rooms with a bathroom between them. And so there'd be five bathrooms, normal, small sized bathrooms, shower, toilet. And then eight by twelve. Then ten rooms. And a common area in the middle. When they talk about. You know, basically. For when they talked about a meeting room, that's basically to serve fifteen people. And that would be probably in the cabin shed up at the ranch.
Right, so and it looks like, like phase four has listed. The area that you pointed out earlier, it says a classroom with two bathrooms, staff offices with two bathrooms, bedroom bunkhouse, which you just described.
And we, we talked about that and that would be. Much better suited up at the headquarters, because we already have the space for that up there.
Which is the, sorry, what are you referring to would be better at the headquarters? All of that stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The offices?
Yeah, that would all fit up there.
And what about the questions about Mallard Lane?
Definitely it would be in access to the cabins like always, but there's no road from the cabins to the inside of the ranch, never will be.
And that's just for your?
It was our employee housing, although, you know, we had to have it to have interns. And so basically, but we use it for the interns in the basically six months of the year and then rented it over the winter.
So it wouldn't be the guests themselves wouldn't be using that at all, like all that traffic would go in and out the main entrance?
There was a question about access to Boulder Commons also. I would assume if the. I don't know if the cabin.
Traspassing.
Oh, yeah. All right.
I don't think they're into that.
Gotcha. I think that was all the notes I had, there, there was a note on future expansion as well, which. I guess the process for that, I mean, it still has to come before. The county for any new structures or anything, which they would look at the conditional use permit before approving anything.
Yes, that's one thing I did want to mention from conversations with Ken. There was question with this conditional use, the, the goal with, with the application was to also be reviewing the phase four. So that the phase four would not need to be coming back to. That's why they included phase four. So I just wanted to mention that, that was at least my interpretation with Ken, maybe I'm wrong.
See, I understood it differently, but maybe. Yeah. He might have modified his. Yeah. I wish he was on.
He had asked if they would need to come back and I said, well, depending on how detailed the information is, it's possible you might need to come back. But if it's very detailed, it's, it could be reviewed during this application time. There was no information as far as anything beyond phase four.
And we talked about it after he made that injection. And definitely, you know, took away the office and the. Offices and the classroom, because they were, they could already be served up at headquarters.
The classrooms or offices as part of the?
Of course, I'm not here. But, but that's what we talked about. So if there is something out there, it would be the bunkhouse or, you know, basically a bunkhouse period. And maybe the patio, you know, the fire pit thing.
So what, if, if I may?
Oh, well, thank you. So, so what you're saying is the original plan for phase four is everything but the bunkhouses? The bunkhouses would still be on the north side of that?
The bunkhouse.
But that's it?
Yeah.
Okay. The bunkhouses.
But there again, I'm not the one doing it, so, you know.
I think it'd be really helpful if he was here.
It'll be, he was supposed to be on the.
I, I, I understand, there's only so much you can control. I get it, trust me, I deal with that every day. Thank you.
I wouldn't be giving it the fight, so I didn't have some trust, let's put it that way.
So I'd say there's a few things I'm struggling with here. One is there's a lot of ambiguity. We don't know what, does it include phase four? Is it just family R and R only, is it family and the warrior path? Is it, we're gonna stay with existing structures as is for a while and we might do phase four in two years or. We, it's very hard for us, so we, just so you know, basically how this works is we have to take the information that's presented us. We have to consider a bunch of factors, we have to make some findings.
Right.
It's very hard if the, if the information is very squishy to like make, to be able to make those considerations. And so, and we've had this in other applications and I think we have been equally. Challenged by it, so, I mean, my, my, what I think is going on is there's emergency to this, from what I understand from your side. There's some.
Emergency, emergency, but.
Some urgency, urgency is what I said, not emergency. If I said emergency, I meant to say urgency. But.
I'll probably make it out of here tonight. Maybe, I don't know, look at the crowd.
But, and I, and I sympathize with that, but it, it, it makes our job difficult and the Board of County Commissioners' job difficult when. We're not exactly sure what we're approving or denying. And I think that's a lot of the anxiety in the room tonight is folks aren't quite sure what this is, how big it might be or might not be. You know, to me, something that looks like existing structures stay as is, family R and R kind of feels. More or less like a traditional guest ranch, when you add the warrior path, the bunkhouse component. Based both on the activities and the operations and the amount of people, it starts to feel more like a very different operation where that becomes the primary thing. And this is not an incidental thing to an agricultural operation, the agriculture almost feels incidental to this operation. And then in that, I, I look at that circumstance and I think, well. I think part of a chunk of that should be carved out and maybe the application should be RS one, recreational services. And this looks more like a resort sort of thing and you keep the rest ag or something. I have a heart, but, so I guess that's just to say, under some of the things I've heard tonight, I think that sounds like a guest ranch. And under some of the other things I've heard, I think that doesn't sound like a guest ranch at all, which just makes our jobs difficult to make the right call. To, to look out for the best interests of. Everyone, yourself and everyone else in the room and, and not in the room tonight. So I'm, I, I struggle with that. I think if we, you know, I think it sounds like the, the agricultural operation has, is not what it always was. You kind of reduced the number of llamas and stuff and that, that's all totally acceptable, I'm not critiquing any of that. But it's just to say that. I think the risk of us putting something like, let's say, let's include all phase four and we put that under an A one label and this is a guest ranch. To me, I don't think, I don't think it really fits a guest ranch very well, the entire kitten caboodle. And I think that.
I think.
We'd be doing, let me just finish my thought and let's respond, but I think we would be doing a disservice to. The A one label by allowing an operation like that to sit under. A one as a guest ranch and, and, and instead of calling it in that, I, what I would propose, and this is just me talking, is like, that might be better to carve out a chunk of, that includes all the structures and call it RS one and leave the rest as ag. That's at least calling it what it is, is a more kind of commercially oriented operation. I know it's a nonprofit, but still something that acts like a commercial operation where you've got people coming and going. Hotel-ish. A little bit different than what, if you read the guest ranch definition and what we've seen historically as guest ranches in Sublet County, it's a bit different than. What those look like in, in my mind, but what were you going to say?
I think Ken would be happy to take out the phase four. As part of this application.
I also have a question. And so. If there's a question about the agriculture, the operation. The idea I got from what you were saying is that's sort of part of the therapy for the.
That's part of it, being part of a ranch, being.
Becomes a big part of their operation.
I think so.
It is, I mean, or you adjust otherwise, right? I kind of got, because you wanted them to play with the babies.
I wanted to play with the baby and all the lost llamas. And I say we kept, you know, the whole hay field and stuff, part of it. During the winter in particular, you know, the trails out there and so that's actually part of what they would be doing, hopefully. That's the way, what I'd like to say, that's the way we've always done it.
Yeah, well, that's a fair point, I guess it would give me some level of comfort if we also had the gentleman here to, because I'm reading between the lines a little bit and I get, you have a vision of what you'd love him to do. He may or may not be as bought into that vision as you are. And so I think. It just makes you wonder a little bit about what his, you know, and I, I'm sure everyone has the best of intentions, I don't mean to cast shade on anybody here, but like, you know, he just might have a different take on that, I don't know.
I think he may, you know, he's, I gotta put it this way. He's definitely sold on trying it, I don't think he's sold on exactly how. Important it'll be. And I'll give, can I give one little story? When I sold my outfitting permits, I sold to Wildland Trekking. And it was with the condition, and it's on their website now, it was with the condition they had to include llama packing. Anyway, he put up a video sometime later and where he said. There was this outfitter in Wyoming and I wanted his permits, but he said I'd have to do some llama outfitting. Little did I know at the time, that would be the fastest growing part of our business. And that's on Wildland Trekking's website. You know, I think nobody knows him and nobody knows.
You're, you're counting on the llamas winning this guy over is what?
I'm on the, definitely a hundred percent. And then, you know, and the other part of it is, we've had two things recently where llamas interjected the conversation randomly. Where they're being used as therapy animals and, you know, that he's never seen before, actually I had never seen him before either. So, you know, he's taking that as a sign too. And I am confident about it, you know.
Llamas are great. Until they're not.
Yeah. You fact with them?
I have.
All right. A lot of it depends how they're brought up, that's why I want to bring up from a baby.
So do you think your partner, if you were to say there's been a lot of public sentiment against this phase four and expansion? That feels more like we're getting away from the whole therapy guest ranch.
Right.
You know, do you think he would?
He, he told me that on the phone the other day of.
He said you can take that out?
You could take that out and we could go straight families, we might need another. We might need another cabin or something for families, but not a bunkhouse. Not to say in 10 years, he won't try again.
Did we get any public comment from Game and Fish or anything? I mean, I said public comment, you know what I mean, comments. Did we ask by chance?
This is, this said, Tardoni, if I can speak.
Hi Ed, we can hear you.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, Al's been a very good neighbor all these years, really has. I admire him. But I have the concerns that the other individuals do of, of that area, which, you know, he talks about it as not, nothing growing there, but I've, you know, there's, I've got that property there and keep horses there back there and I pasture them. And, you know, various people in Boulder have helped me out with the irrigation. And Tyler, you know, he irrigates for me down there. And over the years, I've kind of dried up since Al hasn't been actively you know, farming, if you will, or raising llamas. And my real concern is getting my, getting the irrigation water cut off. This year, we didn't get any stock water at all, and I don't really know why. Supposedly somebody above and below me said they didn't want water. Well, the only one below me is Al. So that, that makes it real difficult and, and and also, you know, my son's raised, you know, plots of wheat and barley and, and oats, enough to take care of his family on that land. And all that depends on irrigation water. And that's my real concern is irrigation water. And of course, the letter I gave you guys with the details. So I'm, I'm with the rest of the people. I'm opposed to phase four. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I do have to say, I don't take irrigation water through that ditch that serves him. So I don't know why they would be talking about it anyway below. All my water come, basically comes in out of the Oliver.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the commission? For the applicant? No? Okay, all right. You can head to your seat if you'd like. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. I know water in Boulder is a hot topic. All right, thank you.
I'm gonna tell you guys, all of you, the neighbors. When Albert Ellis does something, he does it a hundred percent. Look at the trailer court. Look at his house. He takes care of what he does. Ain't a lot of jokes gathered around like larger subjects.
All right, thank you. Okay. I guess any discussion among the commission?
Yeah, this is a big night.
It is a big night.
I, I just, I mean, I already said kind of my thoughts, I guess, before. What I'd say at this point is I guess we'd need to decide what exactly we're voting on. We just need to be clear when we get to vote about. I mean, I think I have a number of conditions I'd like to add. But before we even go there, I just think I guess we could do it as a condition or, or I don't know what we, I mean, normally we, I guess we could figure out some condition language around excluding phase four from this one. And if they need, like any phase four, they'd have to come back. Is how we would do that, but.
Yes.
That means a contention.
Okay.
You know, I don't know. Or if we're just, are we just voting on it as is?
I mean, I think.
If you can have a condition with it where there might be a compromise between both, you know, as valid points that we listened to and considered and.
Yeah, and I think that it could be, I mean, it seems, I guess it seems like there could be future phases, you know, in anything, but those things would have to come back before the, the county as a whole, before approval. So I think I would be fine with that as well.
And phase four also picking up ag land, it doesn't really fit incidental with the comprehensive plan either. So.
Right.
So, I mean, to me, that, that solves one of the problems I have.
Okay.
Do you want me to repeat myself? Okay.
You mentioned some other.
Yeah, I could walk through the things that I think.
We're beyond that point. Sorry.
So I, the conditions that I had written down in consideration of both public comment, written public comment and what we've heard tonight and is, so one, I think, you know, it should be, I would say approval contingent on the acceptance of the donation by the nonprofit. Because they, they say that pending what they find out, they may or may not accept it. So. Okay, let's, let's make a contingent on that. I didn't say access, the main access via 191. In the Haley's report, we read about a recommendation to improve access. So it would be, you know, I'd like to put that in as a condition that access is improved according to Haley's or YDOT's recommendation, YDOT's recommendation. So I guess they, I mean, that would actually, they would require it, right? So we may not need to. I don't, I mean, I'd, so I'd like to see, even if we take out phase four right now, it, it sounds like there may be other buildings, there may not be. So I'd like, I'd, I'd still like to see some sort of site plan, some sort of master plan for, okay, removing phase four. What is the totality of what you're gonna do now? Are you adding more cabins? Are you not? You know, what, what, what do these things look like so that people can have some level of comfort about what that is? And so we have a reference point to say, you know, whether they're doing what they said they're gonna do or something different.
Are you referring to the classrooms and the staff offices that were gonna be added to the main?
Well, that was part of phase four. So I don't know if that's out with phase four or not, but I guess I just, under any circumstance, I want a master plan of what we're, what's being approved. And I would ask that they come back. I would want to make this conditioned on approval of a master plan. You know, so we know actually what is the thing we're approving before it's finally approved. And maybe that's just a master plan that's presented to the Board of County Commissioners. Then it doesn't necessarily have to come back to us.
Sure.
Yeah. We're actually planning, I think through you Haley and the Board of County Commissioners would be our. There's a lot of concern about exterior lighting. If, although I don't, again, like I guess a site plan or something would tell us whether that's part of it or not. But I mean, if there is gonna be the addition of new buildings, new lighting, you know, we've written an exterior lighting section in the new draft regs, I think I'd like to ask them to comply with that for any new lighting that's done. And that's in chapter three of the regs that are online, that are draft, just to be clear, the draft regs. But it's an easy reference to something that we've come up with. You know, we heard about irrigation concerns. I don't have any good solutions to that in the way of a condition. I don't know if anybody else does.
I mean, I think that I guess if the guest ranch is incidental to the agricultural use, is there some language that, you know, that has to, the agricultural use needs to continue because you'd have to maintain irrigation and stuff to be successful with that.
Right.
And there's also, I mean, they have the, their own water district out there that kind of manages that.
So we would require that the agricultural operation continue as a condition?
If, if it's necessary. I mean, I know that's the rule for a guest ranch, but I guess.
Can we do that?
I mean, you could just emphasize it. That they, they follow the regulation that requires, you know.
I don't, I don't think we can do that.
Yeah.
But I like it.
When they're not in compliance of that ag zone, then that's when.
Right.
Comes up. But as of right now, they are, and what they're presenting is part of the ag operation in conjunction.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think that has been met.
So let me, I have a few more here. So one is I'd propose, you know, no sub, is my proposal, no subdivision of the parcel. Right now, you know, you can subdivide to 35 acre parcels without requiring, without having to go through the P and Z process. I think given, given the uncertainties about how the nonprofit might move forward with the land, I would propose that we can mitigate some of the anxiety around that by saying any subdivision, 35 acres or more or less has to go through approval of the Board of County Commissioners before they do that. See.
But that's not really part of what we're reviewing right here.
Well, it's a condition, it's a condition that is associated with the conditional use permit that's being requested. I mean, if the, if it's a way that we can get there from here, considering the circumstances that we're in right here. So like, I would say that, you know, there's a lot of unknowns about how this nonprofit's gonna use this land. People are, are they gonna chop it up, do a comeback with a major subdivision next year? You know, and I think that there would probably be a lot of opposition to uses outside of the current use of that land. So I think in my mind, the way that we can mitigate that, and we're not saying you can't, it's just, we're putting in a step where they'd have to come back to the Board of County Commissioners if they were gonna change.
But they would anyways, right? If they wanted to subdivide it.
They don't have to, they wouldn't have to if it was more than 35 acre parcels.
They can do that upcoming.
So the, the idea behind that condition is that if they were to subdivide anything off, then the conditional use permit would be on the table potentially, if they were giving up like a certain amount of ag land or something like that.
I, I don't know. It'd be up for the B O C C at the time to make that call on whether they approved it or not. I mean, they could just not approve it. I think, I don't know, again, this might just be a good thing to have Clayton here for. He might say, oh, you can't do that.
What would be the grounds on for, for the B O C C to say yes or no? It's just going to them, but then they might.
Well, I can imagine, yeah. I can imagine one scenario might be that the nonprofit says, you know what, we really like this operation, but we don't need the ag operation. And it sure would be nice if we could sell that piece to someone that, you know, wants it and is gonna use it. And we'll just run this 35 acres over here, but the rest of the 207, we want to sell off and we'll use the money for the nonprofit. That's one. And the, and the B O C C might look fondly upon that. And oh, great. Okay. Yeah, it's gonna go to agricultural use. It's gonna be, you know, it's still gonna operate as a large parcel. And but an alternative one might be, we want to subdivide it. We're gonna, we're gonna put, you know, we want to put two acre lots in there and house veterans, right? It's gonna be part of our nonprofit. We want to do a major subdivision. We're gonna use every inch of the 207 acres for housing. And they may not look so favorably upon that. But neither scenario, it just puts a check in place from the B O C C to give a yes or a no at that point.
Seems like a lot of speculation.
That's our job, I think. Specu, I mean, we have to speculate. It's all, this is all speculation. The applicant is speculating.
What, what, what their, you know, motives are beyond what they're saying in their application.
They're not telling us anything about what their intentions are in their application.
Well, okay, I would beg to differ somewhat.
Okay.
You know, I think that they, like what Mr. Ellis has said and kind of what I have read, you know, it's, it's to have this guest ranch for, and use to come to the guest ranch and use some of the ag based stuff for therapies for veterans and people with PTSD. And, you know, beyond that, I mean, granted, what they can do beyond that, there's a lot of things people can do beyond that. But, but right now, what they're wanting to ask is, they're not asking for any, it seems like if there's any sort of subdivision or anything like that, that would be able to be a check and balances as they go to the Board of County Commissioners or have to come back to planning and zoning, or am I totally off base?
They could, they could subdivide into 35 acre parcels without having to get permission to. If they wanted to do more than that, this scenario I painted where they do a major subdivision, yes, they would have to come back through the process.
Yes.
Yeah. But they could parcel off 35 acre lots and sell them to somebody that then does a major subdivision. I don't know. I'm just, I mean, the whole purpose of a conditional use is to put conditions on things that make it so that it doesn't, it's not disruptive to the surrounding areas. I'm just trying to come up with things. What can we do to mitigate a lot of the anxieties, the uncertainties, the potential harms to the community while allowing this to move forward? So that's one.
Um, yeah, I appreciate that. I guess the, my concern would be more if they lose the incidental, the ag use, that, I mean, all the neighbors are in a major subdivision and wouldn't be there had somebody not done it. So that's less of a concern unless they, I mean, unless they no longer were incidental to ag use by doing so, in which they'd be in violation of the CUP anyway. So, I mean, I, if it's not their intent, I don't think it would be an issue anyway, but I guess I'm a little conflicted there as well.
May I ask a question? Where, where's the language that says incidental to agricultural use?
In the guest ranch.
I actually don't think that language is in the current regs.
Right here to the screen.
Is that just in our draft regulations that I'm thinking of? No, I mean. So.
Which is incidental, right?
A conditional use permit has no particular agricultural.
Right, the guest ranch does not.
Guest ranch.
Right, right.
Also, I was confused.
I know, it was a big discussion.
In and out of the regulations.
Yeah.
Actually, over the years.
Happens when you try to read.
At one point it was.
Two months' time.
Well, and when you're drafting new ones and still going by the old ones.
Is that your list that you have?
I think the other thing that we might consider is limiting or restricting like public events. So it sounds like they're not anticipating using it for public, you know, for putting it up on some site for where people can have their weddings or whatever and, you know, renting it out for that. I think that might be another way to mitigate some of the concerns is to restrict public events.
Right.
When you say guests, oh, you mean as opposed to employees?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's true.
About public events.
Hang on just a minute. Let us finish this discussion, then we'll, we might come back to you with a question. I had a thought on the public event, which maybe I'll answer your question anyway, but like if these guys wanted to do some sort of a I mean, they would have to get a is it a conditional use for an event permit?
Only if it exceeds a certain number of people.
Yeah, so like they couldn't.
They could do a fundraiser for under a hundred people.
Okay.
At least that's my understanding.
I think it's a thousand people, actually, is the threshold.
Well, zeros matter.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm not, I mean, frankly, I'm not necessarily excluding a fundraiser. I'm thinking more about
It turning into a wedding.
Somebody having, yeah, a venue, thank you, like an event center that has nothing to do with the mission of the organization.
We can put that in as a condition. I'm not opposed to that. I'm not opposed to anything that you just went through.
Um, I think my only one I would argue with is the subdivision portion. But.
It's really unfortunate that the foundation is not here. But since we're not looking at phase four, I don't think it says.
I, we could also, depending on what you choose to do tonight, these could be presented to the foundation before the B O C C for them to review them and
I know, we've talked about that.
Be present at that meeting or provide some feedback based off of the conditions.
Yeah. I think that's reasonable. I mean.
Yeah.
I am curious, what all do you, what do you envision as being part of the master plan for the B O C C? What all, do you want to be included for that to be presented to them?
I, I would say phases, I mean, phase one is just a due diligence phase, so I would say phase. I mean, we're saying not, phase four is not included, so phases two and three. So it's, it's whatever specifics.
Okay.
If we're not including phase four, whatever they want to do.
Okay, so it's, they, they included a little bit in the application, I think updating that.
It sounds like things are a little bit wishy washy, like things might be added, changed.
Okay.
So I just like.
Sure, I understand.
Right, so phase two is the existing structures, renovation.
Yep.
Um, I think Mr. Ellis said, you know, do an entrance, things in that nature. Because all the facilities are there already.
Without the phase four.
Right.
Yeah. So phase one, two, and three encompass, you know, the existing ranch as is with upgrades through Boulder Crest.
Anything specific you would want to know about with the phases two and three? Because I don't, they're just using what is currently existing.
I think we heard that, like, they might need to build another structure. Are they going to do the classroom or not? So I just want some, I want to know exactly what is included.
Okay, well, phase four was the classroom.
Phase four, what is happening now exactly? Can we get site plans for it?
That wouldn't be a bad idea. You're right.
Well, he mentioned that phase four, the classroom and the office deal would not be included in phase four, because that's part of the average. They don't need to have that expanded space.
Right, but we also heard Mr. Ellis say, we might do another cabin. I'm not sure. So I mean, it just sounds like, we don't know. It'd be good to know. I want to know what are they.
Yeah.
Excuse me, could you put a condition, no more than two twelve hundred square foot cabins are permitted?
I mean, we could, but to me, it just seems like the most reasonable thing to do is have them commit to what they're doing and for that specific. I mean, this is like, you know, we've gotten into trouble with this before. There was, I can't remember the name of the ranch, the guest ranch that was approved. We said uh, we're going to approve this contingent on approval of a master plan. That master plan never materialized, and now they're doing things that we never anticipated and probably would have voted against, had we known they're going to do. So I think just the more we can be specific about what's explicitly happening, the, just the more fair we can be to the applicant and everybody else that's affected by it personally. Yeah.
Okay. Language, I guess.
Yeah. Do you still have that?
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Did you have something you wanted to add to the event?
When you talk about events, you mentioned one with the fundraiser, but we also used to, and actually Mary did them. We used to have discovery kids out and grade school kids out upon occasion, and, you know, do an event with them, or as they came with teachers and mothers, stuff like that. And I'm not sure if, you know, I would still, I would like to not cross that off.
Yeah, so in that same vein, I guess, Chris, if that covers as it's operating as a nonprofit, if they have events that aren't for profit, does that like if they're having school kids out or they're having a fundraiser?
I mean, I would, I think we'd all encourage that sort of program. So I guess, I mean, the thing that I'm trying to protect against is the commercial event center.
Right.
Venue for rent by anyone who's willing to send a check in, basically. You know, the sort of thing he's talking about, I think we would all be in favor of. That sounds like a very good sort of program to have school kids out and.
So would the language then be just not
I mean.
Event for rent type.
Facilities should not be used as a commercial event center?
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if that, is that too vague?
Profit venue.
Well, if it's a nonprofit organization, they might say, well, it's not for profit. I don't know.
Yeah. Protect.
Um, maybe like unaffiliated with the mission of the organization or other educational programs.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, my worry is that there's something that we're not thinking of we're excluding that shouldn't be excluded, but I mean, I think as a starting point, that's.
A venue, not be used as a venue for hire. I don't know if that would, that like I said.
Can't we say that the land shall remain strictly residential and agricultural and can be used for?
Well, we haven't said that.
Yeah, I don't. I mean, that would, yeah, and that would also go against the idea of potentially doing something different with the structures in the future. It's like a.
Well, let me, let me ask, actually, I just thought of another question, which is that this right now is a very specific plan for a nonprofit. Let's say that, you know, this C U P has, unless we say otherwise, lives with the land and could be sold to any for profit to run it as a, any sort of operation they wanted. I'm not sure what, I'm just, it's just a thought that popped into my head that is another, I guess, risk when you're doing something like this, like we should make sure that.
Yeah, that, I had that question earlier, actually, was, so do C U Ps do transfer with ownership?
Yeah, yeah. And, and the, the one that I referenced earlier is doing the things that we never anticipated, sold. And part of the valuation, commercial valuation of selling that land and the business was the thing, the C U P that they had. So it adds value to the to it.
Yeah.
And you can't take it away from them because it's not the buyer's fault that, you know, that's.
So saying it can't be used for commercial purposes is not all encompassing?
Well, definite, we don't have a definition of commercial. I mean, technique. That's, I don't know. I mean, is fundraising a commercial purpose?
I had just, I, you know, I don't know. I have to think on it.
I mean, I think commercial, as Clayton's talked about it, you know, we've talked about, is an exchange of money for goods or services, right? I don't know if fundraising falls into that or not.
This is tough. I do think too, I'm thinking someone have it as a wedding and they donate to the nonprofit to have a wedding. Just.
Right.
Like I said, I don't understand the problem with that, though. What I'm struggling with, like, why would that be an issue?
Well, it'd just be a way of, it's a loophole that could be exploited, I guess, is the potential.
Yeah.
Entertainment venues? I'm using chat G P T. What about like that? Could we say? I mean, this is like a contract. There's, we're not going to be able to think of everything
Right.
that everybody wants. But we got to think of how to protect what he's trying to do along with.
Well, what we could do is ask them to include that in the master plan. Please, you know, tell us what your intentions are with regard to events, frequency of events, types of events, number of guests, and that would be part of what gets approved by the Board of County Commissioners.
So it would just be that or?
Yeah, they would be restricted to what they say, or, you know, they could always come back and say.
I guess if they gave.
Oops, we forgot to mention this, right? I mean, or they could come back and do a special event permit or something too.
So with, with what you just said, what happens if that happens? So if we restrict it as on a C U P and it's violated, what, how is that?
If a C U P is violated, it says in our regulations, the C U P can be revoked.
Oh, I didn't know that. I learned something new today. I learned two things new today. Okay. No, but.
I like the idea, though, of including that program, have a program to be part of the master plan. And it doesn't need to, like, include types of potential frequency of events.
Just, I like the fact that we could ask for it.
Yeah.
What a concept.
Well, I mean, if they said, we want to have five events a month all year long, that's a bigger impact to the folks who live around it than if they want to have a few events a year, right?
And all onsite parking or something for those events.
Yep. So basically, the master plan that we're asking for would include a site plan, what did you call it? A program? Program detailing events?
Yeah. Proposed, yeah, use of events.
So is there anything else that we'd want in the master plan, aside from a detailed site plan and a program detailing events? Not for me.
Do you have in there any new buildings, any, because that's part of the site plan? Yeah.
So where do we stand on the like subdivision portion? Because I've heard we have two folks that are not for that. I, I like it myself, but so then for two, two, that puts us in a tricky situation.
Oh, yeah.
We would have to go in front of the commission.
Yeah.
So it's not like they have to go through a rigorous process.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what gets us there, then I'm okay. So any subdivision they would have to come to the county with.
Mm hmm. Approval by the B S C C.
Okay.
So they don't, they don't have to come through us unless there was something that it triggers, they do a major subdivision, they would naturally, but otherwise they don't have to come to us. I think they would deal with Haley and the B S C C.
You'd be okay with that?
I guess.
I don't know. We just need to move forward on this, and we have two more
Yeah.
topics to cover. We've got to move forward on this somehow.
Well, the.
It's also just a suggestion to the.
Right, the commissioners could just turn around and say, we're not going to do anything. So it's just our suggestion to them. Was there any other thing that we did not agree upon?
I don't think so. I don't know. Not that I heard.
So are we ready to make a motion? We, meaning you?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Let's be clear. This is only my third meeting.
Sorry, I lost it. I gotta go back and find it again.
Thank you, guys, for being really patient.
Yeah.
I never thought about that. Trust me, about a half hour, I could be getting a pillow.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, having reviewed and considered the eight criteria for conditional use permit, I propose that we find that the proposed location of the use is in accordance with the purposes of this resolution and the district in which the site is located, and that the proposed location of the use and the condition under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. And I move to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve this request as presented, but with the following conditions. Condition one, that approval is contingent, be made contingent on the acceptance of the donation by the nonprofit. Condition two, that access is provided only through one ninety one. Or main access is provided only through one ninety one. That any new exterior lighting meets the standards that are currently documented in the new draft regulations that are currently online as of September eighteenth, twenty twenty five under the section titled exterior lighting. Condition five, that, sorry, four, condition four, that no subdivision of the parcels shall occur without prior approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Condition five, that the provision of a master plan, including a detailed site plan, a program, and a program detailing events must be presented to the B S C C as part of the approval process. Condition six, that the facility shall not be used as a commercial event center unaffiliated with the mission of the, of the organization or other educational programs. And condition seven, that doing anything beyond what's detailed in the application this evening under phase two and phase three, that's presented as part of. that's presented as part of the master plan to the Board of County Commissioners, will require coming back through the P and Z application process. Any friendly amendments to that?
I had one question, sorry. On the very first part, the donation from, I think you said from.
Contingent on the acceptance, acceptance of the donation by the nonprofit? That the nonprofit accepts the donation?
Gotcha. I just wanted to make sure I understood that part, right? Is that something that we all agreed to?
He said it was for employee only.
So it'd be condition eight, that the cabins deep identified as number nine and number 10 on the site plan that we have in front of us in the application this evening are used only for employees and not guests.
A motion, do I have a second? All right. All in favor? I. And those opposed? Did you guys?
I'm thinking. I hadn't thought about this part. I'm gonna say nay.
I think you can say that, the town of Pine Dale.
I think you can say whatever you want. I think you can, I don't know if you can abstain, but, you know.
Well, that changes means whatever, what the stuff we just went through was for nothing. I'm gonna say nay.
Yeah, okay. So it's a split vote, I suppose.
Technically, the motion fails, but of course, it goes in front of the BSCC.
Thank you, everybody that came for that application.
So everybody, the BSCC meeting again is what they? October 7th.
Yep, so this will be in front of them.
So I would make sure you make your comments known to them. It's always good to show up at those meetings if you can.
What?
Seventh?
It's the seventh.
All right.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
And please just make sure you sign in before you leave.
Yeah, we're gonna take a five-minute break and then we'll get on to the next two. Chris has heard my complaints, but I wouldn't negotiate on a bunch of conditions if everybody's gonna vote no. Really irritates me.
Yeah. I'm sorry. So my, my issue with that is.
I know, man, I just can't get myself together. And now it's gonna be just too embarrassing.
I'm in a slump right now, too.
Oh, I should come just to see that. Give you, give you hell over there. If we do do my applications, then you have the, the poor panel screen.
Yeah, I've got it all. It's all burnt, but if you do it.
Doing your due diligence.
Like the intros, I don't even know what to say.
I think you've done great.
What the hell with that video? I mean, I've always heard, I'm pretty used to hear about that sort of thing.
So the thing is, last meeting, we had a hard time. That's why we did it, because last time we had a hard time. And now it's like, never mind.
No, yeah, that's too.
Thank you for saying that. Better response than I got last time.
What's that? What did I say last time?
No, not for me.
No, I just.
If you're opposed to it. Which, that was the argument, is like, well, you know, if, whether or not I'm going to vote in favor, it's like, I wanna get as many things as I can, but I wouldn't have ceded on like the subdivision.
I know, I just, when it, when it came down to it, I'm just like, the plan is so incomplete.
And I shouldn't have said that at the very beginning.
I would be, I didn't, I don't really feel comfortable about this, but asking about tabling to get more information. I mean, that is an option, but I just don't know how open you guys are to doing that, because.
I just don't want it to become like a.
Well, and that was the part to me, I kind of was like, okay, he's the one that like, I've, he's been in these conversations, but I think he's a little hesitant to get too super involved until he knows, like that people are behind it. It's kind of a catch 22, because I feel like he does a good job explaining it. And then Alberg is more kind of not as.
But the whole thing comes down to, to me, when it just came down to me, I'm like, this plan is really not comprehensive. It's not even. And I should, and I, and I raise an apology, because we worked through the conditions.
What's that?
We worked through the conditions and I really appreciate that. And just say, I don't think that it's a complete allegation, because it takes a lot of time.
If we can wrap up conversations, we're gonna get started.
Have we worn you down yet?
Fired up, yeah. Okay, do I need to re? We call that adjourned, or?
Reconvene.
Reconvene, there we go, not adjourned, yeah. Okay, reconvene at 9:08, and we'll jump into number three on the agenda, which is a conditional use permit and variance request for a 150-foot communications tower near Big Piney. Haley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, because I'm trying to zoom into Big Piney, zoomed out. Yes, I can, please.
None of that here.
I will just do a, I will just do a brief introduction to the application. We have Courtney and Christopher here as well, that will give the perspective. They'll do a presentation to, from the, for the application. But this property is located to the west, northwest of Big Piney, and it is on the Millage Partnership Property. And the proposal is to put in a hundred-by-hundred pad and then install a 150-foot tower. This will allow for co-location of three additional providers onto the tower. Part of this is moving infrastructure that's on the existing water towers and putting it onto this new tower. But I'll let them talk a little bit more to that. And then as far as zoning, let's just take a look at the surrounding zoning. And everything county-wise is A1 zoning, and just because I, because there are some adjacent areas that are adjacent to the Big Piney, I'm just going to pull that up, too, just so you can see this is adjacent to the town limits as well. But Courtney and Christopher, I'm happy to hand it over to you, and if you guys need me to let you use the screen, share the screen, you are welcome to do that, too.
Okay, thank you. Are you able to, Amy? Okay, perfect. So, good evening and thanks for your time tonight. My name's Chris Schlax. I'm with Courtney Standridge. We're both with SAC Wireless on behalf of Union Wireless. And we're here proposing a relocation of a cellular tower from the water tank across the street to the, the Millage property there. The, the purpose of this project is that the federal government is mandating the removal of Chinese-made equipment, so ZTE and Huawei equipment, which is currently on the tower. There's some national security concerns that the government is looking to replace this with other manufacturers. And so as part of that, when looking at the water tower location, it was not structurally feasible to add that equipment there. So, looking at the available locations, moving across the street, number one, moves it away from that water tower area, which would cause some additional interference if we were to install a new tower there. And then, based on the feedback from our application, the tower that's in the town of Big Piney, that tower is, number one, shorter in elevation, and also closer to the other tower that's over by Marbleton that serves the area. So, in order to maintain our coverage, especially to the west, that location on the Millig property was chosen. So I think that gives kind of a brief intro, and we are available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant from the board?
Okay, I do have some questions, and one of them was that you said 150 feet. However, if you add a lightning rod, that's up to 158 feet. And I also know that that placement is in kind of a wetland, kind of a boggy area. And I wonder how that structurally will support that big of a that big of a structure. And I've wondered, my third question, I guess, is, have you, in your deal, you said that in your application, the interference with the water towers, you couldn't use the Town Century Link Tower. I wonder what sort of other options and places have you looked at before you decided on this particular site?
Yeah, so to answer the first question regarding the elevation, so the existing water tank is at 135 feet. The terrain is 13 feet lower at where we're proposing the tower. And so that 150-foot tower maintains the same level of coverage that we would have today. There is a equipment and lightning rod above it, so yes, 158 is kind of the, the top elevation of that tower. But that 150, where the equipment would go, would, again, maintain the current coverage that people are used to in the area, along with allowing for co-locations below it to still have a, a good location for service there, which would extend out to the west and then back into the town of Big Piney. The other question on the, sorry, what was the second, second point you had there?
The second was that particular area. Yeah, that, that, that is a concern. That's a concern for the community for a lot of reasons. One, you know, the wetland area in general, the placement of that in terms of aesthetics. And then the height of that so close to residential. And have you looked, and then my last question is, have you creatively looked at perhaps, you know, lower towers? Maybe two placed differently in different locations? What, what sort of due diligence did you do before you, you know, decided? Or did you do any before you decided on this 150-foot tower?
Yeah, so certainly with the wetland location there, we, we did do a site visit out to the location. Part of our finalization of the design would be to run a geotechnical report on the area, and so that we would ensure the foundation and the build of the tower would be able to safely be placed in that location. So that may mean deeper piers or a deeper foundation. But, so that would be part of our engineering that would go forward. And then in terms of additional considerations for towers, we did not consider two smaller towers. I think that's a, a, a bigger task than maybe the, the expectation here was, the, the thought was to maintain the coverage that we have today. So somewhere close to that water tank location, moving it across the street at a similar height with the appropriate setbacks from the, the property line, so that we're not encroaching on any of the other properties there. And then just making sure that coverage, both to the west, to the north, and back into Big Piney is consistent with what we're broadcasting today. I think moving it any further to the west, you start to see detriment in the town of Big Piney, moving it to closer to. Moving it to closer to Big Piney, you'll start to see less service out to the west and to the north. And so, you know, the two towers, the one today on the water tank and the tower up on the, on the, the ridge above Marbleton kind of work together to serve the area. And so we were trying to maintain that same level of coverage across that, that greater area with this location.
Okay, I have a few more. So you mentioned wanting to do coverage to the west. Meaning like on Middle Piney Road? Or, I mean, there's not very many residential areas that way.
Yeah, so it's, it's essentially the highway, Middle Piney out to the west, the highway to the, kind of the nor, or I guess not a highway, but the road, Mickelson Lane out to the, the northwest there. This is what we have today. So, you know, that coverage is there today. People may rely on it, may not be a lot of people, but the expectation is that when we're making a change like this, that we at least maintain the coverage that we have in place today.
And then, if you could answer my question, did you look at any other sites besides this particular place to put this tower?
Uh, the, those were the primary options. So we, we did consider trying to do something within the, the same compound, which didn't work because of the interference concerns. We considered the one in Big Piney due to the tower existing today. And then this was the, the other option based on those considerations, being close by to maintain that, that same level of coverage.
And what was the reason why the tower in town, that's about a hundred and fifty foot, the old Century Link Tower, that's already established there? What was the reason why you wouldn't wanna, you know, maybe you don't wanna work with Century Link? But I mean, that is a site that has, that has used a tower, that people are used to the tower, that is already accepted.
Understood, yeah. So that tower from our analysis is about thirty feet lower in elevation. So even with a similar height of the actual tower, the coverage again will be lessened, especially out to the west and north with that, if we were to move in closer to Big Piney. And then as mentioned, the tower that's on the, the bluff above Marbleton is the other tower that serves this area. So by moving our current tower closer to that, we're over, almost overcompensating for coverage, you know, within the towns there with the detriment to the folks out to the, out to the west. So it, it was considered, but based on kind of the overall RF coverage needs there, the location close to the water tanks was what was decided upon.
Do you have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Just gonna go on yours. Hi.
Hello.
Thank you for being here so late. So you, you had mentioned this tower is, you're not gonna improve. Can, can you tell me how many more people will have access with a hundred and fifty foot tower versus the one thirty-five?
Um, I don't know if I have that figure exactly. We did provide some coverage maps in the packet, which is gonna show additional, I think RF coverage with the new equipment there. So you're gonna see an improved overall service here. I think the main goal from the, the engineering here is to ensure that we're at least maintaining coverage. And you'll see, you know, that better speed, you know, within that, that coverage footprint. So part of that is gonna be your, your terrain, you can only go so far from these different locations. And then I, I think part of it is making sure that the folks out to the west don't lose coverage completely. Now again, that's a smaller number, so that number may not be that high. But given that it's thirteen feet lower, the, the one fifty essentially creates the same coverage that we would have today, if not a little bit better with the new technology. So I could try to find that, that number out, but I don't have that offhand.
I would be interested in that, at least going, you know, if this moves forward to the commissioners. It's a question I always ask. So.
Okay.
That, I, I do have a question. I, I think I know the answer to it. But have you ever looked at the site over by the cemetery? There's BLM land. It's about three point six miles away and it's three hundred feet higher in elevation. Have you ever considered, would that, would that be a place that would still give you the coverage being that far west?
Um, it's possible. I could have some feedback on that as well. I think the challenge with, you know, going to a brand new location that's further out would be, do we have transport connection, which would be fiber or power connection? And how involved that would be to get those two items here? For this location, we're right along the road there. So both fiber and, and power would be available to us. So it, as you get further out, I think there's other factors that make it more challenging from a construction perspective or a build perspective that would come into play.
That's all I had.
I had one more question. You mentioned that you would, or another question. You mentioned that this would go from three G, four G to four G LTE, which is just a slight upgrade. Like would, in time, it will go to five G. What, you know, if you have a tower, what does that entail to upgrade to, you know, a five G or higher speed network there?
Yeah, so the, the current standard pretty much across the country is the, the four G LTE technology. So that's gonna give you, you know, speeds that you can count on to, to watch video and, and kind of have your, your normal use of your devices. Obviously, the, the next phase of that would be to go, or next generation would be go five G. You know, typically that's deployed in kind of urban areas right now. At some point, it'll extend, you know, throughout the rest of the footprint. The, the primary change there is just gonna be an upgrade of antennas and radios at the location. If we do have a fiber connection, that's gonna give you your fast bandwidth to the, the tower itself. But at that point, it would just be an equipment swap or an equipment add to the tower to, to add five G to this location. At this point, it's not planned, but it certainly could come in the future.
What would happen is if this application were ultimately denied by the Board of County Commissioners, what, what would be your backup plan or what would you do instead? And what would the implications of that be?
Well, I, I think, one, one consideration is that this is a, a government mandated program. So we do need to swap out that equipment or the risk is, is that tower would go away. So that would be kind of a worst case scenario that we would have to remove this equipment due to those security concerns. I think we, as a backup, we could start looking, you know, other locations, but you'd probably run into similar feedback on those. This one provides kind of that same level of coverage, which was what we thought is our best case scenario to replace the tower. So I think if you went anywhere else, you'd start to, to run into coverage concerns or coverage differences from what we have today.
Me again. What, what is your timeline? What, what are the feds, what's the timeline that they have given you to remove that equipment off the tower?
Yeah, so the, the project right now is, is extended into twenty twenty-six. There's always a chance of an extension beyond that, but the commitment now is to have this completed by next year.
Okay. So with that.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just gonna cut to the chase, since we do not have regulations on towers. I mean, concerning this. Is there a way that we cannot make, because it sounds like you guys have some time, that we can write regs on this particular piece and have them come back? Can we table it to do that? I mean, because I, I could ask more questions all night, but at the end of the day, we, we come back to the same thing. We don't have right regulations that garner around us.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was gonna ultimately get there myself. I just, like I said earlier, I don't think we have the regular.
Well, I just promised Chase that I would cut to the chase. Do you like how I do that?
You didn't want me to talk for thirty-five minutes?
I'm not. No more BS. So that's where I'm at.
Okay, that's something we can definitely consider. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, any more questions from the board for the applicant?
All right, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this isn't really a question, but this is probably something I should have.
Will you speak into your microphone, please?
This is not a question, but I wanted to share this because we received this information this week. And this is a photo simulation of the tower. And I thought it was worth at least to show it. So, and Courtney, if you want to speak up about anything, feel free to, or either of you, so.
Thank you. I'm, I'm behind the scenes.
But.
Yeah, so this was recommended from, from Haley to just have a visual of what the tower would look like at that location. You know, obviously we have the, the water towers across the street there and then the tower out in the field. So this is, uh, yeah, essentially what we're looking at from a, a visual perspective, three different, three different views, I believe, were sent in.
Yes, it is right behind the tree. I just wanted to share those because they did provide them for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, if there's no more questions from the board, I will open it up to public comment in the room first. If there's anybody in the room that would like to speak, please grab a microphone, state your name and speak to the board.
Thank you.
Thanks. Ray Pape, concerned landowner down there in Big Piney. What? And we own the apartments that that thing is only gonna be two hundred and twenty feet away from. And just some questions, right? Google's a wonderful tool. You just type in, how far should a cell tower be from my residence? First thing that comes out, it's recommended now a quarter mile. That's thousand three hundred and twenty feet away. That falls way short. Couple of other items, along with other locations. Why couldn't you build that tower and extend twenty feet above to get your interference with the water towers out of the question? Because that's, that's what you're claiming now, is that tower, the tower you're gonna install is gonna be high enough that there's no interference. Instead of getting rid of the equipment and the funds that the town of Big Piney received from you guys having space on their water towers, when you could build, you could possibly build that tower on their property and they would still get the funding, instead of losing funding for their budget process. And that marshy area, yeah, coming from the oil field experience, you're probably gonna have to drill piers to bedrock to hold that wind load, just my own two cents. And was there any kind of an environmental study done to that wetland area? That's North Piney Creek that flows right through there. We got deer migration, antelope migration, moose walk up and down through that, that creek bottom. There's elk, there's a local herd that run up and down. I've got pictures of them out there in that field that I can provide. So there's a lot more than just providing network service. I mean, I, I'm for better cell service. I just think there's a better spot for that tower than right there blocking the views to the mountains from town. I think that's all I've got.
Okay.
Because I, because I knew, right, with the LR stuff, I knew this was gonna get tabled. I was like, took all my fight out, so I'm gonna have to come to the county commissioners meeting. But again, I thank you guys all for sticking with it. It's been a long night. Appreciate your guys' time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Go ahead.
My name's Steph Polk. I'm a resident of Big Piney. I live in the Metal Arc subdivision, right next to those water towers. And I'm not opposed to the upgrade and cellular service, but I am strongly opposed to the location of this proposed tower for several reasons. In their presentation, they provided no data whatsoever on the impact to human health of their RV and their microwave. And in their proposal, they said they have room for three more pro, I mean, co, I mean, current, co-current operators. So where is the study that they've done? How far are these, you know, what's it doing to us, our local residents, with this type, type of power coming off that tower? And they're gonna add three more co-operators onto it? Is there a baseline study done right now about what is the RF and MW imprint in this area? There, there's been nothing. And, uh, you know, we planned to live there for years. There is a lot of data out on the, on Google, like Ray says, about the effects of human health from this type of installation. And I see no proactive part on Union to provide us that information of how is this gonna affect our local residents? Uh, number two, in that your zoning, the, the county zoning, the height restriction is sixty feet on this type, on this zoning. They're not asking for a thirty to fifty foot increase. They are asking for two and a half times the established limit right now according to county regulations. That would be like asking the state police to let you drive two and a half times over the speed limit. You know, I think that that's excessive and where does it stop? You know, I own acreage around Big Piney. There's a hundred foot setback distance from my, from the front property line to build a dwelling. If you allow them to go two and a half times over the established limit, what's gonna stop you from letting me build ten feet to my front property line? You're opening a can of worms there that if you give Union a variance like that, what are you gonna do for the citizens? Because we're the ones that pay the taxes. We're the ones that live here, not Union. Uh, the other one is, it's gonna have a adverse and permanent effect on our visual. You know, people come from all over the country to come to Sublet County because of the views. When that tower's there, it's gonna forever permanently disrupt the views that we have of our mountains there. And I agree with Ray, I don't see any environmental impact study for that area, that marshland area there presented by Union. And the last thing is it's gonna negatively impact us personally on our property value. The property value, you can Google that on too, that it lowers the, the residential property values within a certain distance of these towers. How are you gonna compensate us for that? And that's, thank you for letting me voice my opinions.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I'm Sherri Redden. I was a previous town council member with the town of Big Piney. I was in the beginning history of Union coming to put fiber optics through the town to provide more service and faster and better service for the business and the residents. The town of Big Piney, at the time I was on the council, we appreciated the revenue and also the partnering and networking and the communication with Union. And so I have not been on the town council for the last couple of years. I keep asking them where the communication, communication has gone and is going with Union. So I'm wondering why the town of Big Piney wasn't more involved in this decision. Also, the site where the water towers are, like the residents are already used to having those two. those two water towers there and that base there is gravel and plenty of space there for another tower that could be higher than those water towers by a few hundred feet and provide that coverage. We appreciate the coverage. We appreciate being able to be, I guess, part of news in the world, internet service and things that our kids or our students or our businesses need. They need to have coverage and they also need to have it be fast. So we appreciate working and having partnerships. We also appreciate the impact that it would provide as previously stated. So I would just like to see, I guess, more communication with the town of Big Piney in working as you have done in the past to provide the good service that has been there. Thank you.
I'm Neil Redden. I'm Sherry's other half. I guess this may be an inappropriate question and you can, you can respond that way. What would the average income be if this tower were to be built on Big Piney property? And if one or two or three providers attach to this tower and provide service, what would the revenue be for the town of Big Piney versus the private landowner? Can you even speak to that? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? All right, anybody online have any questions or comments? Okay, I don't see anybody. All right, so we'll turn the time back to the applicants. Feel free to respond to any of the questions or comments from the public. I've got some notes if you want any help. Otherwise, the time is yours.
All right, thank you, and thanks for the comments from the public there. A couple general comments on the, on what was brought forth there. So the RF concerns. You know, I think Union will comply with any FCC requirements in terms of safety as the tower is, is near the town there. Typically, we only see concern on that if it's a very low centerline site, so 30 feet or below. Anything higher than that is going to be fairly normal RF exposure, I guess, so no concern there from the FCC. So Union will comply with, with any requirements there. There was a comment about the wetlands. So as part of our process here, we will go through a full regulatory review of the site and ensure that we comply with any regulatory needs with that wetland or the creek or stream there. So that is, that is part of this as the approval process goes through. That would be a follow-up step to ensure that we do go through that process and comply with any requirements as part of the project. There was mention of the higher tower at the existing location. I think that brings up, you know, other concerns. I think the thought with this particular location is that we already have the two towers of a similar height across the street. And you're, we're close, but we're providing a better cellular coverage experience with that new tower. So that's why we had looked across the street rather than some sort of higher tower, because we would have to be quite a bit above those water towers in order to ensure no interference with that area. And then we run into setback concerns and other things with the, the particular property there. Outside of that, I don't think I can comment on the rent, although I suppose the town may have information on that. But I am not in position to comment on that today. Were there any other comments from the board that you'd like me to respond to?
Oh. What was the question about the setback?
The recommended, recommended quarter mile setback from residences.
Oh.
Just if you had a response to the recommended.
The distance from residences that was brought up from a Google search about being a quarter mile from residences, is there, do you have any?
I don't have a specific comment on that other than going back to FCC requirements with, we, Union would comply with any specific RF concern requirements there. But as I said, typically, that only gets triggered or flagged if we're a very low centerline where somebody could be walking in front of a direct path of the antenna. These antennas would be 150 feet in the air and broadcasting out from there. So not directed into, you know, anyone's, anyone's home right, right in front of the antenna itself.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any, yep, all right.
I think in general, I did a lot of asking around in the community. And I think I can surmise that the people in the community of Big Piney don't necessarily have a problem with the, with the tower to provide coverage. They have a problem with the location of it and with the height of it. And the fact that no other sites have been, that they are comfortable with, have been explored. There's even, you know, the same landowner has land to the south of that. That's just kind of straight west of the water towers that isn't necessarily in line with the, you know, obstructing the view of anything. And so I just, I just don't think you're going to get, I just don't think if you want to have community support, you're just not going to get community support for 150 foot tower in this wetland area. You know, obstructing these, the community citizen's view. And I just wonder, I mean, have you thought of any sort of other places? I mean, that one of our guidelines I keep going back to is the creativity in the design of the project. And it doesn't sound to me like you have been creative in trying to find something that would be conducive for both the community and your needs. And I wonder if you can expound on that more to the concerned citizens and the people of the community. That's probably one of their main questions.
Sure. So I think with regards to the location further west, the, the concern there is that the tower then shoots back through the water tanks into Big Piney. And so that will be a concern from a service perspective, potential interference as we, we look at the service in the town. So that's why that, that area, anything kind of beyond the water tanks further west or south would not have been a good option. I think when it comes to creative thinking, the, the thought was we're within the same general area of having those water tanks there. It's a similar height, slightly taller because of the terrain change and would still provide coverage across the, the towns there. So I would say that that was the thought process to try to work within the, the options available in that general area.
Share my, or just reiterate what I said earlier, that I think that the variance, I think both variance is problematic because it just doesn't meet the definition of a variance. And the conditional use is problematic because it relies on conditional use as a public facility, which I, I don't, this doesn't get us there. So while previous boards and planning administrators and Board of County Commissioner boards have taken that path to approve these, I think that those were decisions made in error. I say this, I like Union Wireless as a company. I think they're a great company. I think they've done a lot for Sublet County. I appreciate their businesses. Nothing against Union Wireless. I said the same thing with LR earlier. I just don't think we have a regulatory basis on which to make a decision that holds up. And I would, I, I would ask the Board of County Commissioners to, you know, charge us with coming up with the tower regulations. That would give us a regulatory basis to make a decision on this and other tower applications moving forward. So based on that, I have to be a no on this this evening. I mean, I think other considerations, if you set that aside, you know, I think, well, I'll leave it there. There's a lot of what ifs about what the actual tower regulations are to make judgment calls on the other aspects of this.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that. And I would have to say as this, as this particular application, even if we just were to look at this particular application, this is like it is two and a half times the height. I mean, it's just not an application that is supported by the public. And I don't think it provides like that much more of a use to the west and the south. I'm really familiar with that area. I know there's hardly any residents to the west and south from where those towers are. So I would probably be a no too.
No, I think I already said my, my two cents and I agree with those on my right.
I'm on your right.
Why always your favorite?
All right. I mean, I generally agree. I feel like we had a bit of this discussion last month and I still feel conflicted. I do think that, you know, one of the applications last month was in residential, one was in ag. We approved one in ag under public facility. And this one is much taller than that one. But, you know, I feel a bit conflicted with just consistency in how we're looking at these applications. And, you know, I obviously appreciate the concerns about that specific location. I also really hate handcuffing a business with, you know, delays. But where, I don't know, it sounds like we may have some time. I would love to get some regulations in place where I don't feel so lost when we're reviewing these things. So, you know, you all know me. You know, I like to say yes to stuff. And so this is, I'm really struggling. So. So I guess the question now is, do we consider tabling, I mean, is there any possibility that we get regulations by the next meeting? I mean, probably not. So. Right. And so, and so tabling only affords us a certain amount of time. And so I guess the other option is to have a vote and send it to the commissioners for their review and. Huh?
I, I mean, frankly, I think that's our only, that's our, well, we have. Not our only path. We could table. You're right. And actually, I mean, in our bylaws basically say you can table. You just have to say when you're going to revisit it. What's the date, time and place that it's going to be revisited? So we could even do it for an extended period of time. But well, there may be, we may have to look in the regulations. There may be a certain time period that the BSCC has to decide once it's legally noticed. But I think my take is we should vote on it and have the BSCC make their judgment as opposed to tabling it personally.
I, yeah, I felt like I read something about making a decision within 60 days of application.
Right now, one of the things that we tried to address in the new regulations is consistency right now. Different application types have different periods of time associated with when decisions need to be made. So yeah, we have to look back at.
Didn't Clayton say there was 150 on this?
That's the federal.
Well, we do have to be aware of that as well.
Chris, may I ask you a question while?
Sure.
While we're talking about this. Can you tell me again, because I do appreciate Union and what you're trying to do for the community. But I also want to know what your deadline is. You said it was next year. Is there a certain amount of time? I mean, next year when?
Yeah.
Do you have a book off the tower?
So expectation would be middle of, middle of next year. Now, from a, an overall timeframe perspective, we would look for approvals on the tower, you know, in the, in the coming months and then work to get this built in the, the first half of the year. So although there's maybe a little bit of time, I don't think it's that much in, in the grand scheme of things when the, the government mandate is, is up. It's already been extended a few times. So it's something that we need to be aware of and push for. Otherwise, there's a risk that they, they say, okay, the program's done and the equipment needs to be removed.
So.
Did, did he say? Oh, gotcha. I'm sorry. Okay. I don't have any questions. Sorry.
This is the.
So just to be clear, Chris, you would prefer that we vote on this and not wait for us to write regulations?
I, I think the concern is just how long that would take in that we, we aren't able to, to meet our commitment at that point. So yeah, I mean, unless we think that it could be within the next meeting or so, then maybe we've got an option and we could come back with some more feedback. But it's not a lot of time to work with and that we need to, need to get things moving at this point with this, with this project. At least that's our, our directive.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think the, I don't know, I just, I don't think the problem is necessarily the fact that you need to get a new tower with equipment. I don't think there's any argument against you perhaps needing a new tower to relocate your equipment. I just want to make that clear. There is a lot of appreciation for your business in the community. I just want to, but, but the location and this particular height at this particular location is a problem. If you have a different location, you know, that's more conducive to that height, you'd probably get a lot more public approval of that. Just this particular site at this particular height is just not comfortable with the, most of the people in Big Piney who I've talked to. It's not anything against the tower. It's just the height of the tower and the location of it needs to be creative of where else you might, your company might consider putting it.
I'll just say that's not my main issue. My main issue is our regulations.
But I'm just.
But I hear that. I hear that.
For the community members that have come and waited for close to four hours now. I just want to make sure that they're heard because this is, even though it's zoned agriculture, it's basically in town, this particular location.
Yeah, I don't mean to, I don't mean to diminish the public's comments. I appreciate and sympathize with those too. I just wanted to say that my main issue is with the fact that we don't have regulations. Did we hear, did, did we get any public comment from, or I keep saying that, do we get any comment from Game of Fish on this at all or anything?
No, and really I, how they said they were going to do those regulatory things after because of the wetlands. There are other things that I, we did not have time to request that feedback. At least I felt like, given our timeline, we did not. And there's nothing in the, our CUP application that is really requiring us to go.
Okay, in the past, we've gotten input from.
It is not a requirement, but we have gotten.
It's good to know. I, there's certain feedback that like I'm willing to reach out in the future.
I mean, overlay maps doesn't seem to indicate that there are Game of Fish stuff. I'm just curious. But, and, and similarly, I guess I wonder about the town of Big Tiny. Tiny, is any official from the town of Big Tiny? Big Tiny, sorry, I can't talk anymore.
I, I, we did send the town of Big Piney a notice and I actually talked to a town council member. I talked to a town council member about it and she was going to talk to the Big Piney Town Council, but I am not even sure.
Official note.
As far as what, we did send them a notice though.
But we didn't.
About the meeting.
Okay.
But again, that communication was part of the public notice process.
Okay, well, if there's nothing, I mean, if there's nothing else, I can make.
Go ahead.
We have two separate things to vote on, a variance and a conditional use permit. I'm assuming, are you ready for that? Or do you have anything else you want to?
Have at it, Chris.
I gotta find, I don't know. Variance language is tough. We don't do this too often.
Are you looking for that, Chris?
I have it in an email that I sent to people. I have it in an email that I sent to people once that I'm referring back.
I'm just like, I'd like to have access.
By the way, I did include in the staff report for these, just the notes or notes if you need to be able to. But I, again, I don't have a.
He gives such a nice job.
I don't have a draft motion.
You did good. The last one I have. Give it to Doug.
And I don't need that. I just need to. I got a draft motion. I just need to write language for the. I'll just, I'm gonna wing it here a little bit. So I'm gonna do. Do the conditional use first and then we'll do the variance. So. I'd like to make a motion, having reviewed and considered the A criteria for conditional use permit, I propose that we find. One, that the proposed location of the use is in accordance with the purposes of this resolution in the district in which the site is located. And two, that the proposed location of the use and the conditions under which it would be. Operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare, or materially injurious to properties and or improvements in the vicinity. And I move to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve this request for a conditional use permit as presented.
We have emotions. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and second and all in favor, say aye. I'm gonna go aye. And then all opposed.
Nay.
Okay. So the motion fails three to one.
And let's just out of an abundance of caution, do the variance one as well. So I'd like to make a motion that the Sublet. County Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that this application. Requesting a variant to the maximum allowed. Building height within the agricultural zoning district to allow for the construct of a new one hundred and fifty foot tall tower. Should be allowed. And that the Planning and Zoning Board recommend. Approval of this application for a variance as requested.
Motion, is there a second?
Oh, sure.
Okay, motion and second and all in favor, say aye. And all opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. So that one also fails for to zero. Again, that commissioners meeting will be October seventh, so they will be hearing it with our. Uh, vote. And. I encourage you guys to attend. Thank you for your time and for hanging around.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And we will work on. Regulations, but. Probably not by the next meeting.
But we would really like to have you guys involved in.
Yes.
In those regulations.
That you have, we would really appreciate.
Yeah, that sounds good. Well, we'll take that back to the, the team and uh, work with Haley on kind of next steps, but appreciate the time this evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along.
You're doing a good job.
Thanks to everyone in the public.
Yeah, thank you for coming up.
Thank you for hanging with us.
I don't know.
Thank you.
All right, so the. Fourth and last item on our agenda tonight is a minor subdivision request within Hoback Ranches, the Great Gray Minor Subdivision.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this, seeing that I'm the applicant.
Okay. I'm assuming you guys saw my email. Do you have any thoughts?
I do not believe you have a comment. But that is, because it's already.
I, I agree. I'm okay.
Okay. Yeah. So I guess just for the sake of disclosure, I don't know if that's necessary, but I was the listing agent on the property. I represented the seller. I. Benefited from the sale, but I was unaware of this application coming before. The board and I feel like I can look at it objectively and my colleagues don't feel like there's a conflict, so I am not going to recuse myself. All right, Haley, hit us with the details, please.
Ready, ready. I feel like I'm a little more zoomed in than I want. But we are in the Hoback Ranches. I feel like everyone knows where that is. Um, this is zoned RR ten. And let me just, it's hard to see the lot lines. Aerial turned on here. I'm going to turn that off. And the proposal is to split this lot, which is approximately, it's a little less than forty acres. Into two separate lots and then there will be an access easement. Right along this area here to provide to access to these two properties on the north side. I did, you know, when this originally came in. I just thought it was more interesting for my own use, just to understand the Hoback Ranches a little bit of. How, how many subdivisions have been, have taken place in this area? What's the history? Of this subdivision and I talked to Clayton about it and he did say that this subdivision was established before. Those zoning codes were put in and all the, you know, the lots were made, the subdivision was made and they zoned it RR ten. So that's one thing that was kind of surprising to me is the size of the lots, but yet it was all zoned RR ten. And I was like, well, then that makes this. There's no rezone needed, you know, it's RR ten to begin with. I mean, we did a little exercise just to see how much has been in the area, how much. Like my, how many of these minor subdivisions have taken place? And it does look like on this map, this is very like sketch level here using a highlighter. But just looking at the subdivision of how much has taken place in the area already. The applicant did provide the well logs um, and. Per tests, we did not require additional per test, anything specific to this property because it's already part of a subdivision and those tests have been done before. So we did not require any sort of new analysis for that. I just wanted to share this and then let me pull up the plat also. Sorry, that's what I should have pulled up first. And we received a couple of public comments. Two were in favor. And actually, one of those people who was in favor was questioning. There is a parking area. I think this is a very informal parking area. Um, just what is going to happen to that parking area? So I thought. At some point we could address that, but here is this little parking area right here that someone did have a question about. But that's all I got.
Um, is there an image of the, I don't know, but flipped right past it, the proposed. Lot line vision or how it's going to be divided?
It's her. Did you see this?
Okay.
Is this the one you're looking at? Just what you want?
Yeah.
This is part of the plat.
Just up here.
I actually have this plat big. Do you guys want me to do good?
No. Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I forgot to bring the giant plats.
It is right along the road.
And that's. So is that rim that's going?
That skyline drive.
Right there.
Skyline.
Or skyline is the other one. So it's divided along skyline and then rim.
Yeah, I mean, it does follow.
Right, there's kind of a ridge there. Okay.
So each is like the north lot and then the south lot that's twenty on each side?
Seventeen and twenty-one.
Because it's kind of supposed to be in my case.
It is.
It's okay.
They just can't. I mean, it's really tiny. It's small. So this is seventeen and this is.
I like the one that's like, looks like it was drawn with a crayon. Not this high-tech topo map. Yeah. Um, all right. Does the board have any questions for Haley?
Okay, um, I do have a question for you Haley, just to clarify. So on the minor subdivision. It can only be subdivided once. At how I read it, right? So this is a general for, so it'll be divided once into two, generally around twenty acre lots. So there's no way to subdivide those lots into, since it's zoned RR ten? That's kind of what it said in the, that I just wanted to, okay.
But I can tell you, it has happened before.
Yeah, I was gonna say the. I mean, the, like, the twenty-one acre lot could potentially be. Split into two.
But for this, for this purpose though. It's, this is the one time.
But is that a, is that a, our regulation though, or is that like a, because I know some HOAs have. A rule that I think Greener Ranches is that way, they can be divided. Once. But it's an HOA thing, not a regulatory thing.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm talking to regulatory.
Where land is then divided into two tracks in accordance with the chapter, there could be no further division without compliance. With the subdivision regulations of this title, including approval by the Department of Environmental Quality. So it's.
But it could.
It's approved by the DQ.
Because there are. Yeah, go ahead. Okay, I was, I was, I was gonna make you be quiet until. Right.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah. So the ten acre lots in Hoback Ranches. Have been major subdivisions of forties generally. Okay, gotcha. Okay. Okay, any other questions for Haley? No, okay. Um, then we invite the applicant, if you have any comments. Or any, are you, you have to be allowed to do that, so.
Hey, Chris.
Chris Lusnick. I'd say a couple of things. One is, yeah, so a lot, there is a, there's a, there's a um, a minor subdivision according to our regulations anywhere. A given lot can only ever be subdivided once. Period. Unless it's over thirty-five, like if, unless the both lots remaining are over thirty-five acres, right? So anything beyond that would have to be a major subdivision anywhere. Just, that was something that had never registered with me in a way. And then I talked to Clayton about it. He walked me through the whole process of how you find that out. He confirmed that in fact Dennis had always gone through that process because I said, wait, have we not done that before? And, and he kind of. Made me feel comfortable that we had done the right thing in the past around that. So um, but yeah, basically, we're just drawing along the roadlines. Uh, we are keeping, this is adjacent to, we have the property to the north. This is an existing driveway that we use. The previous property owner just let us use it, so we're making it an official easement. There, and this is gonna, this lot, twenty-one point six-three acre lot is gonna be sold to a family member who's gonna, they have no plans to do anything with it. They're. Gonna buy it. Uh, they live in Ohio. Uh, they're not moving here. They're just buying it right now. No plans, but that's the plan. That's the deal with what's gonna happen with that. There's, so there's no planned. Development or infrastructure on either one of those lots. Uh, with the lot that's adjacent to us, we just wanted to protect someone else from building there. Uh, we don't have any plans to build anything on it. Uh, now or anytime in the near future. Uh, the other thing that I'll note is that um, the regs call for uh, input from Conservation District, but because when this was originally plotted as a subdivision, the Concertist Conservation District weighed in. We never do Conservation District uh, input on. Hoback Ranches. I don't know if there's other instances where that's the case as well, but. Just in case you were wondering about that. But yeah, otherwise. Uh, oh, the parking lot came up. So yeah, here there's a parking lot. The history there quickly is that people used to park out at the highway. Um, and snow machine into Hoback Ranches. Uh, Y dot. At some point, Y dot said people could not park at the highway. Um, and so the previous property owner let people use this parking lot. Who uh, needed to park there in the winter and then snow machine to their house from there. So that was obviously a big concern in the community when, when this property came up for sale. Uh, we committed to continue to make it available as a parking lot for a community to serve uh, people that want to use it in the winter. It's not for commercial reasons. We're not charging anybody anything. It's freely available to people who want to use it. So that's the history and story with the parking lot. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any? Questions from the board?
Um, I, I noticed that there were some. And that's just kind of a dumb question, just out of curiosity, but there were those green. Kind of the big green boxes of those power boxes, utility boxes, fiber optic boxes, or what exactly are those on the land?
Are you, uh, are you on Rim Road, like here?
Yeah.
So those are, those are transformers, power transformers. So all the, all the lines and um, well, actually, I don't, it probably doesn't matter. I don't know, it might be because all the lines are underground in Hoback Ranches. We don't have any. Poles, uh, we have lots of green boxes and then they run power lines underground from those boxes.
Kind of future development or whatever they can.
Well, those are probably, those are serving, there's three boxes there and they're serving the lot here. They're serving the lot over here. And then I'm not sure there's, there must be, but they, those are currently serving three. Houses and technically those aren't on our property. Those are just across the property line. But yeah, that's what those are. And that's part of the easement. Anyone in Hoback Ranches has a thirty-three foot easement on either side of your property, property line, uh, which you have to make available to uh, utilities. So that would be fall within the utility easement.
But those would be the, whoever, like, whoever has those lands, they could utilize that. Perhaps.
Those are already being utilized. Yeah, so I don't know. I guess the question is, what's the max capacity and where is it at currently?
Not that I care. I was just curious. I just thought it was kind of interesting.
Yeah, I don't know how those are currently used.
You know, that, that area is kind of mountain-y.
Yeah.
Hilly.
None of those are serving this property, but I, I don't know what, where they are serving.
Really? Feel like I should. You know, really grill Chris here, but.
Do you want a bigger screen?
Off the plat? Yeah, do you have a bigger? Could you, yeah, all right. Um, is there any? I know we had, you mentioned the letters already. Is there any public comment in the room? Or online? Probably. All right. No public comment. Well.
Would you like me to ask the question that I asked?
Yeah.
So my. You're gonna need to answer it.
Here, I can, you're gonna need to answer it. I think, I think you just did. So my comment was with, when you subdivide a lot, is it based upon like a quadrant? Cause a quadrant's, how, how many thousands of acres? And then, once that is subdivided, does that count for this particular instance? And I was told, no, it does not. Because when, when you, when you split up a quadrant, then you have.
If you, if you, if, it depends on what you split it into.
Right.
So, yeah, because this is already been subdivided, they can be subdivided once without doing a major subdivision.
Right.
Within.
That, but that was my question.
Yeah. Normally when people are splitting up, uh, a square, as we call it, you know, you're, you're doing something larger than thirty-five acres.
Yes.
Um, so, did that answer your question?
Did it answer yours?
I didn't have one. Uh, did we get a report from Game and Fish on this? I'm just kidding. All right. Um. Let me just make sure I'm. Okay, so no public comment. Does the board have any more questions? Or does anyone want to make a motion?
If I knew how to make the motion, I would do it.
I could probably wing it.
Or Goodred, if you, if you know how to phrase.
Phrase it. You're asking now.
Just the. Yeah, give me your, give me your laptop.
On this right now.
What do, what do you want to know?
The, just the application.
Oh, here, it's right here.
Yeah, can you do it as simple as that? Make a motion to approve?
Am I allowed to do a motion?
I'll see if I can do it.
Can do it.
I make a motion to approve, um, the application for the minor subdivision permit. For great gray. I don't have that. For great, oh, here, here it is. Great, 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 minor subdivision.
That's what you said, yeah?
Is that all I need? Is that all I need, Chris? Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess we can't. So it passes three to zero.
You're right, I had to break in at some point.
Yeah, you did a great job. It was a good one. Um. I probably need to just go to the.
I appreciate it though. I, I appreciate it though. Your effort.
All right, um, is there any old business we need to address other than, can we please get some tower regulations at some point in the near future?
Do you want to go over the calendar that you had?
I want to go over the calendar because I was going to send a follow-up email, but, or I wanted to email sooner, but they went through the change with the newspaper. So now it's back to the Pine Dell Roundup, so I wanted to double check when notices had to be turned in and all of that stuff. So now it is going back to the, um.
Pine Dell Roundup.
At the, yes, so now it is going back to the Pine Dell Roundup. So let me see if I can find that email that we're, because I was thinking if we stuck with the, unless you guys want to do a special meeting sooner, we can definitely have a workshop sooner than the October meeting. But because we are outside of the advertising for the October meeting, we cannot adopt anything at that meeting. But we could start advertising a special meeting for like two weeks or a week after that meeting. We could start the advertising now and adopt it like a week later.
So you're saying just to have a workshop to have a discussion and no decisions could be made?
No decisions can be made. If, if we do a workshop, if, if we meet before that advertising period, we cannot adopt anything until at least after, after the October meeting.
So we could draft.
But we can still discuss.
But we could have two workshops before then, because the next meeting, we theoretically do not have any applications, right? No applications. We do have an application for the next meeting. Um, but there's no applications for this upcoming meeting.
October sixteen.
October sixteenth, but we did not advertise that we are going to be talking about the tower code. So we cannot adopt anything at that meeting.
I'm okay with that if we just have the discussion.
Yeah, we probably wouldn't get to a place where we'd be able to.
No.
I know.
But I'd say we, we do that.
Okay, so let's definitely then talk about it then. And then as far as doing a workshop previous to that, do you guys, do we want to do a workshop before it, or do we want to do a workshop after it? I, also, is it feasible to even get something drafted in one meeting? That's possibly a lot to ask also.
We have a draft that we.
How do you guys feel about it?
Honestly, it's been so long since I've looked at it. I mean, I'm just kind of thinking about tonight diligently.
I did look at it.
I think, uh, another question would be, could we get somebody that specializes or has some knowledge of towers by then to consult us in the?
I do want to let you guys know too, that I did talk to the county commissioners and they all understand that this is priority. So I went to the last meeting and told them just what was going on tonight and that this was a priority to look at this code. I feel like Doug, though, I asked about hiring like an attorney to help us and it seemed like at the time it was turned, it was more work with Clayton. That was the feedback that I felt like that was the feedback.
So as a general public, what do you think? Do you think the commissioners should, should hire a consultant to help us with this? Cause I do.
Well, we, we, quite frankly, we've discussed it.
Okay. I mean, we could also potentially, I'm assuming some of these company, well, union especially, like, maybe they have like a staff lawyer that would be willing to give us some, I don't know if that's a conflict or not, but like.
When I was with the town, the town hired an attorney to help draft the code. And so Matt Murdock was like, I can put you in touch with that person. It's more, is that, is that, is this, do we have to do an RFQ or something? But it seems like this could be a small enough project that we wouldn't have to go through that process if it's a small enough project. But if there's, I, I think we could start looking all over the place for code, but then you start looking at code and then we might run into other issues where some of these, the code, even the communities don't like their own code.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that's, I mean, that's been the issue.
Yes.
For the last five years, as I understand it, is, you know, it's, we have to just get something that we can work with. And I do think like, I mean, we've done that on other stuff, getting ideas from other communities that are similar. And, um, and then even from that point, getting, you know, so we're not burning a bunch of time with an attorney drafting something new. It's like, can you look at this and are there any issues or something? Like, how can we make this fit within our community?
So we're gonna come down to some hard decisions.
They always do. Yeah.
Okay, turn on my computer screen because this is when we were talking about the calendar. I might email you guys about the calendar. It was like, we could talk about.
Can I say how much I hate Microsoft three sixty-five?
Zoom in at all. Sorry, this is.
Okay.
I cannot, oh, I can't.
The earliest date is October twenty-seventh.
So, uh, yes, I feel like the earliest day that we, and I'm like, I need to actually go back because now that it is Pine Dell Roundup, they publish on Thursdays. So I could actually get something in the paper for next Thursday's meeting. So we could get this advertised for next Thursday and to give us the thirty days, that would be seven, fourteen. Yeah, that was October twenty-seventh. Okay. So that really is the first week that we actually could have a meeting if anything was to be adopted.
Are you, I just, I don't, I trust that you're right, but I just, my understanding is that, uh, if we called a special meeting, which is what this would be, that that, that only requires like seven days notice to certain people.
That is right, but if you're adopting.
Right.
Changes, then you have to have the thirty day.
Right.
It has to be like, we have to advertise more. But if we wanted to do a workshop next week, or like in two weeks, we could still do that.
I mean, I, you know, the downside of that is we want as much public input as we can get and we're not, that's not great. Seven days notice is not great for public input, so.
Or.
Is it, I mean, it's acceptable to say that at our next meeting, we're going to be talking about towers. We're not, I mean, I would rather just, I would, I think it's ambitious to think that we're gonna have something by the, whatever that was, twenty-seventh anyway. So I would be fine just, you know, aiming for our November meeting if we wanted to adopt something and have as many.
Yeah.
Workshops or whatever we need between now and then.
Yeah.
And have hope that the public shows up if there is anybody that wants to talk about it at our October meeting.
We could give notice as kind of a, under a special meeting banner that, hey, at our next regularly scheduled meeting, we will be talking about towers. We won't make decisions for attorney drafting, public, public working.
Yeah.
So I was wondering though, if the next county commissioner meeting is on October seventh, there are four items going to the county commissioners from this meeting tonight. Would anyone be willing to come to the meeting with me and maybe talk about the towers? And we could talk about the idea of hiring consultants? Would, I'm happy to do that, but I wasn't sure if anyone would want to do that, just to, because it is, I feel like with all the commissioners and all these applications, it's a lot that's going to them at one day, in one day.
Oh, I know. They love to see me.
So I'm just wondering if anyone would like to be, would like to go with me to, for that.
Sounded like Tammy just volunteered. You're gonna be there anyway, so.
I usually am.
You might as well. I mean, you can just say.
It's optional.
How embarrassing and frustrating this was and we could really use their help.
No, I, I'm happy, I'm happy to go.
It's optional. I just thought there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
For this next county commissioner meeting and at least to, to be able to talk to the tower code a little bit. Might be, might be helpful.
I, I do believe though, if, if every single one of us wrote to the commission and just told them how frustrating this was and the, the tower communication, I think that would have, you know, a little bit, besides me just showing up. And you showing up. I think if everyone just wrote a little something, something, something.
Okay.
Could you do that?
Yeah, probably. Um, I'm not committing, but I.
Do you want me to write it for you?
Yeah, if you'll draft it for me, I'll.
I'll send it to you.
Um. All right. What?
No, I'm just thinking this is a lot going to the commissioners on the seventh and I have to get it all ready.
Yeah, but, but he's got it all down. He's been here. He, he can teach everybody else.
Hopefully some of them have that.
I'm gonna tell you. If you go to the commission meeting on the seventh, try to explain how confusing it is to everybody in the power thing. I will say absolutely you're right, because it's pretty confusing for the applicants to be trying to make a decision. Where you don't have anything to look at and fall back on and say, yes, we've made a decision based on this. But what does need it, and it is an important thing, I think, because what you're gonna see, I believe, in the future, these things open up, oh, this is some direction, so to speak. You're behind the eight ball and you can't get out of it. They base this decision on this, what is this, what is subject.
You're right.
Yeah, I mean, my recommend.
Mike.
Oh, I'm seeing it. Yeah, I think we all, this is, yeah, this is.
What's your recommendation, Chris?
Uh, well, my rec, my, my hope or recommendation to the board of county commissioners would be to say that, uh, you know, moratorium sounds like too strong of a word, but basically that uh, tower applications won't be approved and we're gonna, you know, charge the P and Z commission with as quickly as possible, finalizing their draft tower reg, regulations and getting them in the reg so that we have something that's. And, and of course, you know, we push that to you because you have the authority to do that. We don't. Um, but that's what I would hope.
Well, you heard from the folks here about a huge.
But I think that's every applicant.
Yeah.
At least for my three months on this commission, that's what I've seen.
One thing I just wanted to mention, just to think about, and it's more just when people start questioning like, hey, I just learned about this. Why was the town taught to? Like, we went back and I'm like, these conversations started back in, I mean, it was like late April. Um, I think when they first reach out to the county. And I'm almost like, how is this process, how can we better the process to include other people or other agencies, the town in this?
Entities.
I was really shocked that they weren't.
I mean, that's, it's just more like the process of it, where they submitted this full application, this full analysis without, you know, without other people's input. And it's like, how can we make it where they don't necessarily have to go through all of that to get some input with?
Yeah.
Anyway, I just think it'd be valuable had, had there been a way to get some input initially about the location or try to streamline that a little better so they're not having to go take so many steps backwards.
Yeah.
It takes a lot of work to target.
Well. Yeah.
And if you don't have the targets in your system, where you can see it, this is where you shoot it at. Then how can you, how can you hit that target if it's over here or over here? You don't have a concise plan to nobody and somebody can be there and say, this is what we want to do, this is our application. You say if you follow the law and the rules, make some people, man, we might know this so well. But, but again, because right now, a lot of us are finding annoying because we can circumvent this if we do this. So you have to, or you have to. But there is no. See, there's, there is no solid guidelines on a lot of stuff. That's my, I, I risk through some of this stuff and you read something over here and then someplace down the road, it kind of calms your dick up. I mean, where you have to go start again, try to find the third option.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay, um, any general public comment? No? Then we will adjourn at ten thirty-six. My goal of a fast meeting, you know?
I know when you said they're gonna be really fast.